So let's call this meeting to order, first one of the year, January 12th of 2021. That guy 2020 behind us. So Mayor Pro Tim Villalobos is not here. Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Shell Allen. Lisa, can you hear?
Lisa, Lisa.
Here, here.
Councilmember McLeod.
Yes.
She's on quite a delay there. Councilmember McLeod is not here. And Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And Mayor Devaney is present. We do have a quorum, but just barely. So let's rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. My nation and my land. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. And so that first thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing associated with a certificate of appropriateness for a house to be built over off of Skyline. But most council members know Skyline over there fall, the the front of the street falls on, falls within the certificate of, or excuse me, the Senate corridor, which requires a certificate of appropriateness for things being built. So with that, let us talk about that. This is at 56 Skyline Drive. They're building a small house, 960 square feet approximately, two bedroom, one bath. On a currently a vacant lot.
Did this go out with the read aheads?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's keep going. I don't know if I'm gonna get the picture. I'll look through.
So would would it didn't go out with the Thursday read aheads? What out today? Maybe? So those of you who are out there in radio land may not have come and picked a packet up. Probably don't have a picture and we don't have it on the screen right now.
Oh.
But in your packet, there was a shot of the lot that they're gonna build this on. A couple of ways. And then a diagram, I guess this this house that they're looking at the front of was their example of.
That work, yeah.
And these pictures are kind of grainy.
Yeah. But basically it's just a framed house that they'll put in there. It goes with the a number of other houses that are out there.
Now, there's a picture of a an already structure there. Is there they planning on tearing that down or it's just next to it?
I think it's next to it.
Okay.
So what are these pictures of the house that we're looking at and like the second?
The first and second pictures are of the lot and the houses on either side of it. The third picture though of the single house looks like it's other construction, I believe, is the one that they say it's gonna look like this from the front.
Oh, okay. So the pictures of this house is gonna be similar to the one they're gonna build?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Because this house looks like it's about ready. They're about ready to move it. The skirting isn't on it.
They're not moving it, are they? They're actually building a new one.
Right, right. This is all gonna be a party board.
I called her. I called her to make sure because to me it looked like this was already on the property. But she said, no, this is a house that it's going to, the material she presented, it would be the same type of material and the same shape and size of this house that they, that someone else is building someplace else. The lot is vacant.
There we go. So on that subdivision, what are the standard sizes of the lots there? I mean, is this a half acre lot or?
No. They're smaller than half acre.
It'd be nice to know this, you know, what the size of the house is in relation to the lot. And so then we could ascertain what the setbacks are as well. Because this doesn't really show the size of the property.
We need to get the respect. This lot is vacant.
Do you think? I don't think. It's 56 Skyline. So what's on the screen now is is what is kind of the look, front end, what it's gonna kind of look like. That one, of course, is under construction, but you know, porch, small house behind it.
Yeah, it says 960 square feet, two bedroom, one bath on Pier.
That's a side view of the one under construction. So you can try to see what the that side of it looks like. Now for a certificate of appropriateness in the Senate corridor. They'll, they're, they are in the city limits. They will have to go abide by the building codes, et cetera, Sam. They will have to go abide by all of that. This is basically, just to approve the the exterior look and feel of of what they're gonna build.
It's also multi-use.
What's that?
It's also a multi-use.
That's what I was gonna bring up. That zoning, we'll have to double check the zoning that that structure can be put in.
Well, there's a house up there. I mean, I'm sure there's a house.
If it's a current vacant lot and you're not continuing a non-conforming use, then you would have to apply the zoning district for that location. And that could be an issue. In this case, which is, which is mixed, which is mixed use, mixed uses is defined as it creates a dense housing environment where something like the buildings at the square in San Marcos, where you have businesses at the bottom, apartments and lots at the top. That's something that is mixed use, so. That might be an issue in this case.
Why? Why would that be an issue if they're just building a home in multi-use?
Well, as much as I've been working on the the zoning orders, I don't quite have it memorized. If you give me one second, I'll pull the, pull it up.
To answer your question, Sam, she pulled it up seven tenths.
Hey, hello. Hello, can you guys hear me? I I got technical problems. I'm working on Zoom, but I'm I'm here with my phone. So I'm all, I'm here. Hey, I'm here. So.
All right, thank you.
I'm have, I I'm working on it. I'll try to get on.
Okay, all right.
And the mayor just reported to me that it is seven tenths of an acre.
All right, never mind. So unexpectedly, single family detached homes are allowed in in mixed use. Not a not what I would consider to be a mixed use, planned use, but here it is on our table. So it should be, it should apply as long as they meet the setback requirements.
Okay, so this is a public hearing for the public. Anybody in the room want to ask questions about this one or make comments? Going once, going twice? All right, council members, y'all have, anybody else got a comment they want to make? Let's go around the room. Lisa, you got, you got anything to say?
No, no, sir.
And Mike, we're going over this.
No, I don't.
Okay. And Jan, you've had a shot already.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, Sam. Okay.
So wait, why I have, I have one last question. It appears to be a shingle roof, which I think is okay, but and then parking? Parking, they just park on the ground or they just park on the road or I mean, parking doesn't matter in the scope of the building of the house? I mean, that will come later, right, in terms of that? Okay.
I don't believe it has anything to do with the certificate of appropriateness for the Senate.
Okay, okay. Just if the house is appropriate. Okay.
For the city, yeah. If in fact it were a commercial situation, it might, but otherwise, no, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. That was the attempt to get get information to the council, from the folks, and that is closed, oh, hail. Close at 6:41 P. M. All right, that brings us to our regular session and we have, and that was the section for public comments, general public comments. We have not received any in the email system for this. And so we have one here for the person present with Mr. Glaze. So you are up. You've got three minutes.
Okay, my name is Bill Glaze. Catherine and I have lived in on Northwest River Road since 91, so about 30 years. We love Martindale and we will live here for the rest of our lives. But I've never been happy with our city government and I believe that Martindale would be just as great if we were not incorporated. My issues today have to do with the condition of our roads, particularly Northwest River Road and Lockhart Street. When we moved to Martindale, Northwest River Road was County Road 103, and it seemed to have been kept in reasonable condition by Caldwell County at that time. In the 30 years that we have lived here, the condition of these two streets have not really changed. No matter what we're told, our expectations are, are that nothing will really change as long as the city is in charge. I recently drove through the streets of Maxwell, a very poor Caldwell County town where the streets are taken care of by the county. The streets are in pretty good shape compared to our streets. If you doubt it, just go take a look. In the, in the last week, we had a terrible rainstorm and I counted over 30 new significant potholes on Northwest River Road. That ain't our fault. It's just that that happened. But if if we were a county road, I believe that the repairs would already be in progress. By the time ours gets fixed, we will likely hold more than more. Also, take a look at the condition of the streets in Spring River Estates, who have chosen not to be part of Martindale. And also the wonderful job the county has done on Southeast River Road. Our city will never be able to, in my opinion, our city will never be able to adequately serve this community considering their debt, payroll and police. If we disincorporate, all that would go away and I and most of the Martindale residents wouldn't be paying you over $1,000 a year in property tax. On the last note, I had a conversation with our chief of police last week and he said that he would take some action the next day. The issue is that the speed limit on Northwest River Road going north from begin to the beginning of the Harrison property is posted at 25 miles an hour. Going toward town in that same period, it's 30 miles an hour, except for the S turn, which is, well, warning posted at 20 miles an hour. Apparently, nothing was, has been done because a new sign needs to be put up. Because of the condition of the road, all of the walkers, families and children on Northwest River Road from Harrison property at least, I believe the speed limit should be no more than 25 miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all public comments we have for the evening. Moving on to Mayor. The mayor's report. Okay. Yeah. Okay, COVID-19. Let's talk a little bit about that. There are two vaccines out there now. I'm sure everybody knows about that. They're out to be administered, priority groups have been, by priority groups and by authorized distributors. Within the past week, the state has done a little pivot on that and changed the distribution allocations to put more of the vaccine into the large city. What you're calling them hubs, so that they think they can, they dole them out faster that way. Within Caldwell County, the HEB over in Lockhart is a distribution center. If for local folks who want to try to get in line, you can call their pharmacy and see what's available. There is a location in Looming as well. And I don't know the name off the top of it, but if you go to the state website, they have them listed now as to who who has them, how much they have. I'm sure that runs behind time. So it'd be better if you talk to the people directly at the locations. And of course, there's a number of locations up in San Marcos if you can get it. And then your doctors, your personal doctors ought to have as much information on how to get the vaccine as they can. For the, from the city standpoint, the Corona virus release fund grant that we had, of course, that ended on 12/31. That was part of the legislation that was passed back in the spring of last year, early summer. We submitted $22,066 or $22,066.58 reimbursement. So far, we received just under $14,000 of that. We still got some, we we think we've submitted everything we're gonna be able to get out of that. So we're waiting for the remaining nine grand or so to come in. And we reduced the daily cleaning of City Hall to looked like it was gonna be twice per week, but but for the price of twice per week, we're gonna get it done three times. He came by today and talked about that. So we're still, as the case counts are high across Texas and and rising, even in Caldwell County now, we're gonna continue on with some just to be on the safe side here at City Hall, at least for another month, and we'll play it that year based off of case counts and the like. The other thing that's coming up is our city elections. May 1st of 2021 is election day. There'll be three places up for election. The mayor's spot plus place two, which is Jan, and place five, which is Sam. Application period opened up.
You will be opening that on the 13th?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. So if you're interested in serving on on the city council or be the mayor, please, please come in and get an application. It's time to go do that. A fine Martindale tradition is to not put in applications till the very last second. That's, that's hard on the city staff to go do that, but they'll, they'll be able to handle it if that's what you choose. To try to break that, I will announce that I that I will not be running for reelection. The, so the mayors won't have an incumbent to go go worry about. Somebody out there is gonna need to come, come forward and want to be the mayor.
Deadline for the applications. Excuse my interruption.
The 12th, I believe, of February.
Yes.
Now, we have traditionally used the last several years, the Caldwell County Elections Office. But after the November elections, they had there wasn't a very big office. So it wasn't like a herd of people walked up the door. I believe they had two and both of them left. So they are struggling over with the Caldwell County Elections Office to get, get, get personnel in place to go off, go handle this for this go around. And it doesn't look like they're gonna be able to go help us this, this time around. However, the some, the experienced person that used to run that office is available to go assist us. And we have engaged her, Ms. Olandor, to go off and help us walk through the may election. She will be doing the kind of stuff she did for them over there for us. Of course, we're on a much, much smaller scale. That, that decision isn't totally finalized yet, but we'll be next week, depending on what we hear from the San Marcos Independent School District. There were, we've talked to Caldwell County and the school district, and they are in negotiations on how to handle the school district election for Caldwell County residents. And depending on what happens out of that is where we will decide we're either gonna show try to go merge them on this election or just do it on our own. But right now, it looks like on our own is probably gonna be the best bet. So we'll get word out to you at the next meeting on how that falls down. Okay. With that, that's the mayor's report for this. And that brings Jared.
Good evening, council. So first thing, want to update you on the zoning ordinance update. I've been working on defining key terms and highlighting other issues that were brought up in previous conversations. I should have a preliminary update to you for your consideration next council meeting, whenever that may be. So the 19th or the 2nd, I think is worth to look like on terms of the calendar. Using track changes. And so all changes are annotated and clearly matrixed back to where they came from. And then I've also annotated each definition to an example, either state statute or other city ordinance that that definition is borrowed from. So you'll have confidence that I'm not just winging terms on on these things. So there's, there's some precedent to what we're, we're trying to do. I, yes.
Yes, sir. When you refer to the use table, are you talking about the supplemental use table?
Uh, yeah. So, um, let's see. Yeah, key terms within the use table. So for, for example, our current use table, which, which we showed earlier, I closed that window since, has, you can consider it the supplemental use table. It's, it's where defined land uses are either permitted by right, require a specific use permit or not permitted. And so a lot of terms within that table, such as a farm orchard or ranch was not defined. A duplex was defined as including up to five residential units, which is something that's been corrected. So there's a number of terms within there that were not defined. And so in an attempt to make the zoning ordinance more easily administered by the city staff, we're going through and defining those terms. In addition to looking at other potential zoning updates. Those might mainly coming from two sources. Reviewing the preliminary zoning, preliminary zoning plans that are included in the city's master plan. So the city lasted a comprehensive master plan in 1997. And this document formed the basis of zoning within the city at that time. State law requires a comprehensive plan as part of the zoning. And so I'm working with Kent right now to understand how that would apply in this case. So if our master plan was a 20-year plan and we've expired that, what, what kind of legal considerations do we have when we look at making changes or updates? Other thing that includes is zoning regulations in districts related to open or open spaces or recreational use. And also follows the flood maps at that time. And so one of the concerns we've, we've kicked around council meetings previously is how do you handle development within flood zones? Should zoning changes be a part of that or should we just administer those developments under the flood prevention regulations? So there, there's a, there's, could be a use for using zoning to also address that issue from a land use perspective, in terms of open spaces or recreational use over other, or district overlays. One of the examples I found was having a flood map district overlay with land use regulations attached to that in it as a supplement to their flood prevention ordinances. So they'll, I'll have some of those things teed up, rated for discussion on the next meeting. Other things we've been working on are utilities. The, we had, as we discussed previously, we had a number of power issues, power supply issues at our lift stations. Our electrical engineer visited and inspected the wastewater lift stations last week. And we're, we're ready, waiting on the report of those findings. And we'll take appropriate action when, depending on those results. Another thing that the city staff is working on or has experienced increasingly since about November, but definitely since COVID began, is the number of delinquent accounts. We're experiencing a significant rise in past due accounts. This last billing cycle had about 90 delinquent accounts that missed the due date for that bill. And that's a rise from, I consider, anecdotal baseline of about 10 per month. There's a couple of reasons for this, I believe. One, the big one is COVID-19, obviously. And during COVID-19, we streamlined the application procedures to, for people to be put on payment plans and also made that application available online to help expedite those requests that may be from people who may have been impacted in their jobs or financial status because of COVID-19. And we were providing longer grace periods. We would provide multiple notices and and delayed shut offs for for some accounts as we tried to work with those people to get them. And if we suspected that they had a COVID-19 related issue or not. So we were being kind of lenient on when we were sending shut off notices. As the problem, program has, problem has grown, we are addressing that differently. We are trying to, we're starting to reduce those grace periods and starting to send off, send out shut off notices. Because of the size of the delinquent, number of delinquent accounts, it's becoming unmanageable. And I think not, probably not rightly or wrongly, but there might have been some recognition on, on some people that we were being more lenient. So we're trying to promote folks who are impacted under the current economic conditions to register with a payment plan and buy down and get, get their account square.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, what would be the example of something you would shut off? Their garbage or their sewer or?
So it depends on what the nature of their service. Most, there's essentially everybody in the city receives trash service. So if if all they receive is trash service, then we would contact TDS and have their trash can and, and recept, and recycling truck can removed or cart removed. And if they were also on wastewater, if you have wastewater services, then your water would be shut off. Also, we shut the water off as well.
That in conjunction with Martindale Water Supply.
Exactly. So we work with the Martindale Water Supply Corporation. We have a standing contract with them for the administration of shut offs. That's been in place for quite some time. And so right, right now, there, I don't believe, I have, I don't think we have any water shut offs at the, at the current time. But we are sending notices and notifying residents that if they're behind, they need to come in and or apply online for a payment plan or get their account paid in full.
Um, Jared, I have a question. And if you, if you just, if you, if you stated this, I may have missed it. What is our criteria for, for great, for giving grace, for giving some type of ability to, to be late? Have we, do we determine? Well, I'll just let you answer that before I speak.
Yeah. So at the beginning of COVID, we were being less aggressive, if you will, in our interpretation of the ordinance. The ordinance says that in the case of a delinquent account, first charge against any existing deposit. After that, provide a notice as, as soon as possible. And then if that notice has been, 15 days after that notice has been sent out, that if that bill has not been paid or that person's been put on a payment plan, they get their services shut off. And so we have used the ambiguity of the, as soon as, you know, that as soon as possible for setting a shut off notice. We've used some discretion there during the height of the COVID. And, you know, going back into April and May and June. And since then, we have started with our most delinquent accounts or the highest dollar value accounts and started to get those corrected, get those either on a payment plan or start the shut off services. At that time, we also had a significant level of employee turnover. At that time, we also had a significant level of employee turnover in the June timeframe. And so during that process, we discovered we did not have a documented, repeatable process for managing delinquent accounts other than what is prescribed within the ordinance. And what's that?
Which states?
Uh, which states that you, that a delinquent account would have their existing deposit credit towards their past due amount and receive a notice of a potential shut off.
And so, okay, so you've answered my question. So what I am understanding is that we do not have any criteria on our books that give staff direction as to, to whom and for how long grace would be permitted. Hypothetical consideration or thought processes, you know, specifically during this pandemic, we have people who have lost their jobs because their job may not be essential and they are no longer employed. And so getting employment has been difficult. Therefore, they've collected unemployment. So in my thought process, would it be, would it be remotely viable for us to have something? I don't know if this would be by ordinance or by policy. That would be a Kent question, but, but to, but to have some guidelines as someone would have to be literally collecting unemployment, which means their income has reduced, some type of proof that, I mean, we're all in a hardship of sorts as a result of COVID. However, some of us have the ability to justify that and prove it up and others do not. So.
So, so this grace period, we're, we're, we are prevented from providing free services to residents. Our ordinances and regulations specifically state that the city cannot provide free services and will not provide free services. So this grace period is only, is only related to shutting off services. So that, that's where we made, we're not canceling any bills or writing off any bills or anything like that. That sort of decision would have to come to council for consideration. We may have one account to bring to council at a future meeting to discuss that sort of issue. And that has very unique circumstances that I think would, we, I would recommend at that time that council would consider. For now, when we look at payment plans, there are specific criteria that they have to meet to qualify for a payment plan. That's the unusual hardship and they have to have the capacity to perform the, meet the requirements of that payment plan. So they have to be able to have a job or have some sort of income to do that. So when you don't have a job or you don't have income, you wouldn't qualify for a payment plan necessarily. Or don't have the ability to pay, then we're in a tough spot in terms of what do we do? That's the situation of one account that we'll bring to council in the future.
And would that, and would this situation fall into any of the relief funds that have come down from higher ups from state and or federal levels?
We have not received any grant funding for this purpose.
It sounds to me like if we have ninety accounts and I'm a, you don't have that broken down into wastewater versus solid waste, do you?
No, and most of those are less than thirty days delinquent. There's a significant number that are between thirty and sixty. And I don't have the number top my head, but I don't believe we have much more than five, five to six greater than sixty days delinquent at this point for those who are not on a payment plan. Now, we do have those who are beyond even ninety days delinquent, but they are on a payment plan.
Okay.
Let me, let me go remind everybody in here is that we, of course, when we, a couple of years ago, when we started this, when we started looking at ordinances and trying to follow them, we felt one of the things that was pointed out by some residents was that the solid waste ordinance does not specifically describe shutting off water as a, as a penalty for late payments. And we talked about that significantly, talked about the, the council reviewed how we should handle that. The answer was, let's just follow the ordinance. So they've been doing that, but it pointed out that the fact that our two ordinance is one for solid waste and one for wastewater, we're not consistent with each other on how to go off and handle, handle late charges. Although our processes that we were using here with the city staff were consistent. They were just doing them both the same way because they're both utilities and that's what most cities do.
Right.
So there's some activity in there. And then when we got into the front end of last year, we weren't in too terrible, bad shape still working just calls and letters. But with COVID hit, there was a moratorium on cutting off utilities. And I don't remember if it was a governor's order or whether it was just a
It was.
recognition that, that the order to stay evictions is similar to staying, shutting off somebody's water that's in the middle of COVID, lost their source of income and da, 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 da. So, so for six months, we, we kind of just were playing it by ear, waiting for COVID to resolve itself and waiting for some of this activity to settle down so we could go off and go fix that. The point tonight in Jared's thing is, is they have, he and the city staff have recognized this is something that needs to be, go, go, go be worked. I think his point is, is that there is some work to be done with the ordinances. They need to be consistent. They need to, need to spell out the things that he's tried to describe verbally of setting up the process. And that's what that last bullet was, right? Somewhere in there, it's talking about, about changing a, or creating a repeatable process to go off and go address these things. The ninety number is scary, but we've seen that before. A lot of times at the holiday periods and or when the weekends fall on certain days, the ninth or tenth gets, gets on people very quickly and it goes by them. And all of a sudden, they get an orange letter that says, hey, you missed the, the, the payment due day. And then the money, the payment starts flowing in and et cetera. The real kicker is the five or six that are out there that are now several months delinquent. And they're working those one at a time, trying to understand what, what to do. At least one of them has got on a payment plan. A couple of them have been on payment. Okay, so a couple of them now are on payment plans. The point is, is that the council needs to help Jared and Dwayne and Sylvia and everybody with, when they come in and say, this is what we want the ordinance to read like, so we can go do this on a regular basis, repeatable and to be able to explain to everybody, y'all need to listen and be willing to make some changes to those ordinance.
Absolutely. I will remind, I will, I will remind when we get to number nine on our, our agenda for future items, that this really needs to come to the top of our, our priority list for ordinances. I was on the council many years ago when the delinquent accounts were just random number, probably, it's not exactly, but it was, it was in the, and it was in excess of eighty thousand dollars. And so this can snowball very, very fast. It took a lot of years and a lot of effort to get all of that up to date and it has been going well. So if our ordinance needs to be dealt with, then I certainly will do whatever I'm asked of to do to help get that back in check.
Yeah, and, and we're looking at that, whether we need, whether we need an ordinance change. If we need an ordinance change, what, what, what's needed? It may just be a internal process procedures that's, that's strictly followed. The change about how to handle trash pickups was something that we, the, how we handled delinquent accounts for trash only services was an issue that we brought up when we made that ordinance change of how are we going to have that forcing function to compel compliance without the ability to turn off water? That, that is some of what happened here, not completely, but that's some of it. And so I think of those six or seven that are more than ninety days delinquent, I think five are probably trash only services. Four or five are trash only services, so more than half of them. And the others that weren't were, you know, COVID related hardships. And so we're getting this corrected. So we're establishing repeatable process. We'll have recommendations to make in the future if we need to, including potential changes to our contract with the Martinville Water Supply Corporation and how that fits into a neater process and making sure what our, what we're doing lines up with what they're doing and that we're all have, we all have that documented and how shut offs are managed. We're also doing a self audit of inactive accounts. So a renter moves away, their final bill lingers and lingers and lingers. That's, that's another issue that we're investigating currently. And then one of the, one of the things that really helped us get on track was we had our prior city utility clerks doing proactive billing collection calls. And that practice hasn't continued in the form that it was practiced previously. Right now, we're down one person for that desk and it's, it's getting overloaded. So we don't have the ability to do that quite as much as we used to. But that process really helped prevent some of these, you know, especially on the thirty days, less than thirty days delinquent or, you know, minor delinquency issues, get those corrected quickly so they don't snowball. So we're trying to get, get that going. Yeah.
And let me just throw in the part, the part that you just stated in regards to renters who move out and they don't pay their final bills. I don't know exactly where it is, but I do believe, well, I'm living proof of it. If a renter moves out and doesn't pay the bill, that bill gets reverted to the property owner. And then all, all rules apply to the property owner that we have on, you know, on the record so far.
Yeah.
Shutting off utilities.
Right, exactly. So we're, we're going through those records, making sure our eyes are dotted and crossed before we pull any action to make sure we understand who it is that we're, what is owed. And we're applying deposits that may be on the account, but under, you know, maybe it's the owner's name instead of the renter's name. And how do we apply that to past due amounts though? We're, we're doing a self audit on those. We're digging deep into them. The other thing that, that really, that causes or contributes to the number of delinquencies is having an antiquated billing system, electronic billing system. And we continue to conduct market research for affordable solutions. The best we've seen at this point is probably about six to seven thousand dollars a year, which is half of our IT budget. And it's a, it's a significant expense there. It would probably come out of the utility budget, but as a comparison, I mentioned the IT budget.
I've not seen, I've not seen a, a utility application lately. However, just in this particular issue, updating those applications and if in fact there needs to be a space on the application or the form that, you know, is this property a rental? If so, who's the owner needing the owner's information? That may already be, I do not know.
We're, we're, we're getting that instituted recently. It may, it's for some of those that may be a little bit older accounts, you know, that, that are rented, you know, rented for a couple of years and then moved away. That's, that's what's something.
I got it. I see. Thank you for what you're doing.
Any other questions on this issue before I continue on? Okay. Um, and the last one, want to bring city council's awareness to the Walton Cotton Center. They have submitted their application for their wastewater treatment plant for their development along near highway eighty. The permit application should be available for you viewing at city hall any day now. I don't believe it was provided. So in the notice that TCEQ put out, they said, oh, if you want to review that permit application, it's available at four oh nine Main Street, Martindale, and we don't have it. So we're working with the developer and they're working with their engineer to get us a copy of that so we get public viewing. This notice is, is a preliminary notice. So if, if you want to request a public comment or a public meeting on this issue, you can go to the TCEQ website and make that request right now. This is, this is basically the first notice of, of several that will likely come out on this. And so if, um, one of, one of the stipulations on, if there's a significant degree of public interest in the application or if requested by a local legislator, they will make the developer provide a public meeting on this issue. So my recommendation is probably be good for the citizens to know, understand what's going on, but that's for city's council decision. If we want to pursue that as a city, you're, obviously you're welcome to as a private citizen.
And that's, that spurs a question to me. And again, maybe I've missed it. Where are we on our city TCEQ application and permit process?
So the permit was renewed in twenty twenty and every year I think we submit some more forms to pay a small, small amount of money and they keep it going for another five years. So I think we're due for a renewal in twenty twenty-five.
Do you know what month? Do you know what month we, it, it, it was, it was accepted in twenty twenty?
February.
Yeah, that sounds right. Yeah.
February. Okay, great. Thank you.
Five years, so it'll be February twenty twenty-five when, when it expires.
Got it. Thank you.
Jared, I got a question for you, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, is this that, I mean, I know we talked about this, they're having a package plan. Are they, are they still trying to dump into our evaporation pond system?
No. So the treated water would dump into Hemp Hill, Hemp Hill Creek, which flows into another creek, which eventually flows into the San Marcos River south of city limits.
Cause you know, we talked about, about a partnership on that deal. Yeah, we probably should have a, since this is such a hot issue for all these, you know, these package plants coming in, we should definitely have, we should get involved and have a public meeting on this. It's a big issue.
Right. And it might be worth for, for more recent council members to, to review, to get a review of the development agreement and, and what's included in that. Cause there is, within that development agreement, some language allowing the city to use that wastewater treatment facility for fee and for future developments and things. So it'd be worth for all of us to take another look at it since it's been a few years.
Agreed.
And that's, that's all I have.
All right. Jared, moving on to the financial report. Dwayne, you're up.
Thank you all. Hope you had a chance to receive the report this afternoon and take a look at it. As of today, I see the, the bank balances, the general fund having about fifty-eight thousand dollars in it. That's a view to property tax revenue flowing in currently. I've already had to move a hundred thousand dollars out of that account into our tax pool account. And you see the street and road balance, the court, the police and the utility fund and deposit fund. The community development account is the grant account that was mentioned earlier. We are awaiting additional funds to come through that account and reimburse the city for expenses that have already been incurred. If we go down to the tax pool accounts, see the emergency fund, since it's two hundred and seven thousand, the public funds, investment act fund, you see the various designations of the money there. The general fund overflow is where I mentioned I put the hundred thousand of excess funds that, since the revenues come in early in the year. Hotel tax continues to grow. We had three nice size payments this last month. Almost approaching thirty thousand dollars now. You see some of the utility deposits are held there as well. And then you see long-term capital improvement fund up to one twenty-eight. That includes the sixty-five thousand dollars we moved there last month for future road project. And for the patrol car. That order has been placed financing secured this way. Order has been placed financing secured, just waiting for the car to be built. And that will be our first payment, our $12,000. And then you see the controller fine number, 255,000. Uh, the next report is the general fund budget report. And, yeah, you were there.
Was in there? I have.
Yeah. Uh, you see the property tax revenue we've got, we've, uh, through December, we've collected half, uh, of the revenue, property tax revenue for the year. And then you see the other, uh, line items going down through. We are, uh. One quarter of the way through the year. So if you look at the percent of budget over there, you're looking at. Uh, 25% is kind of being the, the baseline. And, uh, so there we are, 40% of our revenue through the first quarter payroll. You see it's 24% of budget. So that's. Uh, personnel expenses are on track. Reimbursements from the utility on track. Operating expenses are at about 21%. Um, while I was reviewing this over here earlier, um, that first line item that advertising. Um, large amount of that money actually needs to be moved to election expense. And I have done that. It was notices for the general election. So that will appear but in better order next, uh, next report. And you see the overhead reimbursement from the utility as well. And then expenses.
I, I have a question before we get too much further.
Um, yeah.
You stated back on that original, uh, that first page with the bank statement balance that a hundred thousand dollars was moved. Out of the general fund into text pool. Just remind us and also for the public, what is, what is the trigger? Uh, that.
Well, see that, see the, uh, that total first Lockhart Bank, uh, subtotal there. That number needs to be kept below $250,000. So, uh, you can see if I'd left that hundred there, we'd be approaching it. We still wouldn't be over. Um, so anyway, that's, that's the trigger.
Got it. And so when it gets moved over to text pool, that just means it's, it doesn't mean that it's not available for us. It just means that it's beginning to, um, earn some interest, correct?
Yeah, just a little bit. Not much. Uh, and it's available overnight.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, the next page. Would be the vendor payments for the month of December. If there's anything out of the ordinary there. The, um, Caldwell County Treasurer near the bottom there, that large payment was election costs. Uh, for the general election. The CDW government, uh, that you see there, that's the cost of our. New conference equipment here that will be reimbursed by the, uh, feds. I have that, uh. Requested.
This, this handy company that is expected to be one of our last payments. Are we almost?
Uh, no, no, no. Um. Yeah, let's see. I saw audit over here on the previous page. Um, we've only spent $8,200 of a $20,000 budget.
Okay, okay.
So now we, we've still got a ways to go and.
All this checks outside.
Yeah. Um, and then on down through any, anything else. See the library contribution was made in December. Hey. Hey, look, anything else? There. The next would be, report would be utility fund.
Uh, I had a question about, uh, a recent expense possibly. At the last meeting concerning Guardiola Park, we had the engineers, which we do an elaborate drawn up design of the parking and the streets and. And I don't know where that cost fell under because it was quite an elaborate drawing of the park and the streets and, and all that. So.
Yeah. On the previous report, um, we, uh. Yeah. We, uh, you'll see the payments to him.
I don't know if those are inclusive of that work though. It could have been. We'd have to go.
There you go. Freeland Turk.
The which, it doesn't say which, uh, amount covers that. They went in engineering. But I mean, was it a thousand, two thousand or the?
I like, like you said, I don't remember. The 2000, I believe was the survey.
Yeah, that, that was the survey was 2000, 1037, 90. Probably had that and some other stuff in it.
All of the.
It may be that it's coming. I don't remember. One, one of those. There's one that, that, that we just got here a couple of days ago. So he wouldn't be in there.
I, I can take that for action. Get it back to you.
Yeah. Because I, I was thinking that if we, as I've heard before, that if we have some expense over a thousand dollars, that it needs to go to council. And I just wasn't sure because that, that was a somewhat of a surprise to, to see such great, uh, elaborate drawings. And so I don't know how much. I'd like to know how much that costs.
Okay. Back to the, uh, utility fund, I suppose. Yes. Uh, you see $80,000 collected the first quarter, uh, 26%, so we're on track. And, uh, this is billings. Um, as Jared said, we do have some, uh, delinquent accounts. Uh, I looked at the, uh. Computer here before I came up, uh, about $8,600 of delinquent accounts. We bill about 28,000 a month. So, um, those are the numbers, uh, that we're looking at there. And.
I'm going to request, uh, Mr. Anderson, that going forward until we sort of get out of this COVID delinquent snowball. That that information be highlighted and, uh. And, and put into your report at our meetings so that we can stay at every single meeting. Uh, abreast of where we are because that's, in my opinion, the only way we're going to not snowball is to stay on top of it, at least within our knowledge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, that's a, it's no problem. Okay. Um, so net income at the bottom, you see is about $8,600. Which is about what I just said, we have delinquent. So I guess we're kind of breaking even cash flow, uh, right now. Here today. Hey, the next report should have, uh, the vendor payments. Um, not a lot of extra. Items going on right now.
As I, as I am seeing Bluebonnet Electric at the top, as there, I personally was going to make, make a phone call. But it seems like there's quite a few streetlights that are out. Um.
Yeah. If, if you'll, if you'll let me know, I, I regularly notify them.
Okay.
And, uh, usually it's the mayor that comes in and says, hey, there's a light out on pole number 602.
Right.
And I send them an email and they, they take care of it.
And, and also, and also for the, just for the public to know, you know, every, every street light pole does have a number on it. And when that, um, if in fact a residence, um, light is out, you can, then what you're suggesting is to call. The office instead of Bluebonnet directly with that light pole number and that you will take care of it. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. And I, I usually follow up and drive by, you know, at night and, and make sure it's fixed at a reasonable time. So.
Great. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Did you get the one at the post office?
No, I haven't noticed that one. Is there one out there?
I got the one at Crockett and, uh.
Close.
Lockhart, not Crockett Lockhart, Boolean Lockhart.
Uh, there's one at the, there's one right at the post office and it is out.
Okay. Well, I'll check that out, uh. Uh, as well.
Thank you.
And I, I think that's all I have, uh, finance wise. And, uh, I'll try to get, uh, the rest of the information to the auditors so they can get their report done, you know, within the next month or so. And we'll get, uh, last year officially in the books, uh, at that time.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the court. Who's judge? The judge on?
Uh, you know, uh, he, he mailed me raid and study.
Oh, all right. So council has, uh, you got this one in there somewhere. Council had his report. He'd come by and provide that today. Any questions from the council on the judges' reports? One wants going twice done. Uh, police report, chief's out. Uh, I haven't got a blotter. He's been out since, uh. New Year's Eve with the, on COVID quarantine and/or suspected COVID case. Uh, but he has, uh, received a. Date of test here recently and his quarantine period is up Thursday, I believe. So he'll be back in a couple of days, but he, he has not been with us. We, I will tell you all that we've had a number of. Instances, of course, uh, Harry's been in, in, in this, uh, a number of times over the, the last nine months. And we've dodged it pretty good, but this go around, I don't think he did, he did. But, uh, you know, I don't know that for fact.
We had another officer get exposed this last weekend too.
Another officer get exposed this week. Yeah. We had another officer about two months, about, uh, in December that was, that was out for several times because of. Quarantine due to work, uh, other work, uh, exposures, et cetera. So. It's been a real challenge the last, ever since November, putting, putting people on the street on this. So, but they're doing the best they can. All right. With that, let's move on to, uh, the boards and commissions. Do we have anybody here from the historic commission tonight? Uh, can you make the list up to, to see if we got anybody out there that we?
Oh, yeah. Let's see.
I don't see Craig. Charlie's there. Uh. Okay. So no, nobody from the historic business parks. Uh, you want to talk about anything, Sam?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief because I know we have a big, uh, agenda tonight, but I noticed down in phase one that the survey was completed in phase one. So the north and south boundaries of phase one. Have been established. I have walked that with one of our friends of, of the park, Sean McDonald. Uh, we noticed that there's quite a great expanse of land on the northern side of phase one that extends to the river. Quite a beautiful, uh, section of land, a great, great part of the beach also is, uh, there to be looked at. Uh, it appears though, that since the leaves have fallen off and we could see the clear spaces that, that we need to get some, uh. Bulldozing and some clearing done there and to figure out which trees we want to save. So by next meeting, I will. Uh, have some proposal or have some bids to be presented to the city council. So I would like that to be a discussion item, maybe not an action, but definitely a discussion item for. Improvements of phase one. Also recently, Guardiola Park has been designated as, as a park. So. I, I would like to see, uh, improvements made, uh, slight improvements made in Gar- Guardiola Park. Such as perhaps a picnic table, couple of benches. One major expense that I would like to see at Guardiola Park would be the. Implementation of a water meter. I have discussed this with Martindale Water Supply. The cost will be $1,150. I would like to see a water meter, uh, be installed there. So that will be another discussion item that I would like to discuss. So improvements to. Guardiola Park, uh, and even suggestions. For what we can do with the park, perhaps a small dog park, uh, a community garden. I would like to get in, input from the new parks advisory committee on, uh. Things that we can do with Guardiola Park. And then we could start on the volunteer, uh, committee and install the two water trash cans that I have bought. Or the city has purchased for, uh, Allen Bates Park. So I'm very excited about the $19,000 that we have to spend on the parks. I know probably. Seven or eight thousand of that needs to go to the mowing, uh, for the summer, but that still gives us ample money to make improvements at Guardiola Park. And as I said, install a meter, make improvements and start making improvements in phase one. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Before we get off the parks on phase one, Sam, we, I've, I've challenged or requested that, uh, Mike home, uh, give us a quote on putting in. Vibrating in some metal posts, uh, to mark those edges so that we don't lose that.
Okay.
He, I, I haven't talked to him since the first year, but, uh.
I, I did install some T-posts myself on the south side, so I.
I just wanted to let you know so that, so that, you know. Share that with Parks Committee or whatever. But we should, we need to get that done this month.
Yes, sir. I think so as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning. Lisa, you got anything?
Um, just the, just the fact that phone calls continue to come in. There are, um. A, a couple of situations where applications have been sought out. I cannot say that they've been submitted yet. But in relation to subdivisions, and I'm talking about like small parcels of property, a property owner just wanting to subdivide their own property. As, um, as well as inquiries. So we continue to have, um, activity. People really, really like the city of Martindale and want to in some kind of way be a part of it. That's all.
Uh, we're also having a meeting, uh, next Tuesday, correct Lisa? We're having a planning and zoning meeting?
I'm, I'm looking, I'm pulling my calendar. I remember we did discuss that. Um.
I, I have it on my calendar. I just want to.
I have it on my calendar as well. Um, I also have, yeah. You know what? The reason we have it on our calendar, do you have P and Z on your calendar or just, um?
Just P and Z.
City council.
I thought it was just P and C. For, for next Tuesday.
Jared, help out.
So I think what, I think what's happened is we. Pat, or the city council passed a resolution to hold, uh, council meetings every first and third Tuesday. Um, and that, that was during when we were, were down to three council members. That has not been rescinded or changed. So it's been a kind of a standing. Understanding, if you will, that, that that third council meeting would also serve as an opportunity to discuss planning and zoning issues.
Okay. Right. Right.
Okay. So there's nothing scheduled or?
Well, we'll talk about that when we get to the end here. So whether, if, if that's the, right now, it, it is, uh. It is considered a regular council meeting next week, but of course we can always do add planning and zoning and drop that. So. Last, uh, uh, commission to report would be the river, the San Marcos River Board. Joy, I don't see her on there, but I do see Charlie. CEO. Oh, Joy's there. There's. Okay. Joy, you going to share anything with us?
Um, I'm trying to turn on my camera. It's not coming on, but, um, I will say that, um, I don't have too much to report. We continue to follow. Um, the, um. Wastewater treatment and discharge plans for Cherryville development, the mine, the HK Realty development. Um, we are following, um. Uh, the trash situation at Skull, which of course is much improved with this cold weather. Um. And we're keeping the eye on, uh, the highway 110 bypass construction. Um. And, uh, but the most important thing. Um, that I, I want to point out to is that three of our members' terms. terms expire this month. I sent an email to this effect. And this is a good opportunity for anybody, you know, in Martindale to participate and volunteer for this really gratifying board. And I'm sure once COVID passes, there's going to be tons of people wanting to get out there and participate with anything river. So if you know anybody who wants to climb on board, once again, three of our members' terms expire now this month. They, all three, including myself, are willing to carry on until, until, you know, volunteers are found. And then next, a year from now, the remaining four members, their terms will expire, so.
Joy, I have a question. We have requested from the historic commission to have a list of names and term, when their, when terms expire. And so I, I don't know if Jared and the mayor have a current, have a current list of your board, but that would certainly be helpful so that that information could as well be put on the website for people to, to see organically that those are positions that are opportunity to be filled.
Absolutely. I'll get that to them.
Joy, I had a question. Sam Clinton here. Can you just in a few sentences describe the bridge of 110 over the river? What type of bridge it is?
You know what? I, it's not over the water yet, but I haven't personally kayaked that stretch, but I know Virginia and possibly Charlie, maybe.
I have, Joy.
Have you?
Yeah, they got the pylons in.
Good, because we were really concerned about the silt control and, and whatnot. So have you, have you noticed any ill effects from the construction?
Well, you know, it's been real dry lately. That issue would come up. We had a heavy rain event, but it looked okay from what I could see. They do have silt fences. They do have heavy rock material down on there. And like I say, they just put in the pile on, the pylons are in, so it should go, they're going pretty much fast tracked on that project.
And, and are they using gabions, do you know?
What's that?
Are they using gabion?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Joy. Moving on to the agenda items, seven consent items. We have one set of minutes, which were from the 15th of December. And then we also have the accounts payable, which doesn't have much on it.
I make a motion, we accept the consent items for the minutes payable.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second. Anybody want to talk? I hear nothing. Jan in favor, Sam's in favor. Lisa?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, it gets us to agenda item eight, discussion action items. So with that, let's go to the first one. First one is discussion action on approving the certificate of appropriateness application for 56 Skyline Drive in Martindale. So this is the one we talked about in the public session. Now the decision point time, anybody got a problem with this? Let's go around the room. Sam?
No, I don't.
Mike?
No, I don't.
Lisa?
No issue.
And Jan?
I have no problem.
Okay, so somebody make a motion to approve.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 56 Skyline Drive.
I'll second it.
And Sam is okay, you say?
Yes, sir.
And Mike?
Okay, aye.
All right, so that passes for. The next one is discussion action on the long-term capital improvement project. So in the last 12:15 meeting, we talked about the process we've been going through to go determine the road. In early December, late November, whenever it was, we moved the funds over to fill, continue filling that up. We're now at 128,000 that we can spend on, on road improvements. So the next step was to pick, pick which road we wanted to go try to do this on. We reviewed the original spreadsheet. We sent that out. We're going to go over that in a minute. Sam got his inputs in today, and so we added those. And so the price in your, the spreadsheet in your packet and the one that went out last Thursday has been updated with Sam's things, the what we're going to look at on the screen here in a minute. So we'll see that. There was a question that Mike had about, let's go look at the way that Cola County overlaid some roads and see what they think. He wanted to get the engineering guy out there to go do that with him. And we did that on the 23rd. Mike, I'm, I'm gonna read through these, but I'm gonna give you an opportunity to talk if you want to.
Okay, I appreciate that, sir.
The overlay process, of course, used on old Martindale Road, it was definitely would be cheaper than a total rip up and rebuild of the roads. It can be affected if the road base is sound. Turk agrees with that. I think we all agree with that. But most of our roads don't fit that category. This process does not address the drainage issues, which causes the road based failures or is a major contributor to road based failures. Doesn't address the road edge deterioration that we've had. And of course, the example that we reviewed didn't have any kind of disruption to the road that we've had in most of our city streets when we've installed the wastewater treatment system. So when you look at our city streets, the pictures we've showed in the past, when you drive around, you could see where the, where the sewer lines are and there's a dip there and you could tell that that's where it's, it's following that. So Mike, at that time, on that day, you, you did agree that the road with the failing road base will need to, need to go through a rebuild process. So you want, got, want to comment on that or?
Yeah, yeah. Man, I thought, aren't we, are we going to have, I would like to have an expert look at, say, Northwest River Road, Lockhart Street, Main Street. I'm not an expert. I don't know the background of our engineer, but you know, I did talk to Ed Thirio and he said that they would gladly come out with his, with his road guy and look at these particular roads and, and give us their professional opinion as a courtesy. I think, I think that would be a good thing to do, to let, to let the experts look at it. For example, I do agree, some of these roads, secondary, most of the secondary roads, there's some, some that are really in bad shape. But it would be best, I think, if we did have an expert look at these, look at these main thoroughfares. Because if you look at them, I mean, the middle of the road is solid. It's the edges are the problem. And just going back over to the old Martindale Road over by Three Dudes Winery, they got issues too. There's no ditches over there. They had the same issue that we do with our roads. And by the way, that, that road was, was capped about a year and a half ago, and it seems to be holding up well. My only thing is I'd like to get the most bang for the buck, you know? If we could just, just analyze the cost and, because we could get a lot more roads fixed with that, with that overlay process. And I think it'd be good, it'd be beneficial if we could just have a, a meeting to, and let the experts decide if it is, it's possible.
Thomas on there, I guess we'll.
Yeah, I might have to unmute him.
If we can do that.
Oh, no, he should be, he should be able to speak.
Thomas, you out there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, there he is. I guess Mike doesn't think you're an expert. You want to go address any of that?
Hey, hey, I didn't say that. I did not. Well, if you want to throw me under the bus, it's fine. I just saying, Mr. Turk, I got all the respect in the world for you, but you don't do this every day. You know, let's have a guy that does this every day and see what they do. We both, we all looked at those that the old Martindale Road is very similar to what we have, you know? And let's let, let's let these guys do it on a daily basis. And they're, they're offered it for no, for no charge. So I think it would not, it would be beneficial at least to look into it.
Thomas, you've been on our roads multiple times. Talk to us about this.
Well, hopefully tonight, we'll, we'll come away with some streets that have been prioritized. And, and once we have that list, I, I can easily and very inexpensively do a, an evaluation of the pavement. It's something I've done many, many times over my career. So I think getting the county folks involved is, is added expertise, especially the guys that are out there doing construction. So I'm willing to work with anybody that wants to contribute. But after we get that list, we'll do an evaluation and we'll decide what the best thing is to do based on the condition of the road and how much money you have to spend.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, that, that's good. So let's move on to the next slide up here then. There was also a question raised at the last meeting about an interlocal agreement between the city and the county concerning road repair and rebuild. Of course, we mentioned at the time that we had an interlocal agreement, but I couldn't remember what exactly was in that. We sent that out with the reads, pre-reads last Thursday. I don't know if y'all got a chance to see that. That's been in place for, since 2012. I think it was in place before then, but it was modified in 2012. So it's been numbers of years where we've done that. It speaks to the fact, though, that this was all about road maintenance. This was the, basically an agreement between the city of Martindale and the county that said that the county would come over, because we didn't have the equipment or the staffing, would come over and do pothole repair maintenance on their road maintenance schedules. And they did that for a number of years. It boiled down to basically putting coal patch in and running over it with the tires of the dump trucks. And they didn't seem to be lasting very long, et cetera. They would charge us for the materials is all that we ever ended up paying for, which was really a good price. However, the price that they would charge us, I think, for the, for the square footage that they were doing, is that was actually more than what we'd get done with our chip seal guy that comes up and sprays it all. So we seemed to have found a, a more reliable, longer term, a longer lasting solution for potholes that we can go schedule on our own time as opposed to waiting for the schedule of the county. And so we haven't been utilizing this interlocal agreement for pothole repair. However, Mr. Turk pointed out that if they're into road building and we add that to the interlocal agreement, that we sidestep some of the procurement issues that we're going to have to have if we go out just to go build that. So I raised that issue with, with Ed Thirio after the end of the year. I called him up. We talked about, you know, can we change this? Are they interested in going in and doing a road rebuild, et cetera? His comment was they are not in the road rebuilding business. They are, they are in the maintenance business over there with their, with their county road team. Things like what Mike's described, where they overlay the current road, smooth it out, put, put a layer down or roll over it, they, they do that all the time. But to go in there and fix bases or whatever, they would go off and go subcontract it out just like, like we were. And they were not interested in getting into the road construction business. So his recommendation is that if we have to go down and do road base repair to, to really fix the roads, that we really ought to go, go out and do the procurement process that we've talked about. So that's where we're at with, with that. We offered, I offered up that next time that we have our road patcher guy out here, that, that if they, to get him and Mr. Leclerc, who's the road, county road maintenance supervisor, out to review that, that maybe they would be interested in procuring one of those trucks at which point in time they would use it all over the county. And then we would get out of, we would go back to, we could go back to calling them in to go off and, and touch that stuff up. So I've got that action to go, go continue down that, that. Great. To see if I can get them to look at it, see what they could, could go do from that standpoint. All right. With that, those, those questions that came up last time, last time being answered, we now need to get back to prioritizing a road, picking, picking some roads to go off and go do. So if you go to the spreadsheet came out, let's look at that right quick. So this is the list of roads for everybody's remembering now. The left-hand side is the, is just the, starting column A is just the numbering system so we can make it easy to talk about them. They're road segments. So when there, sometimes the road is identified, it's the whole thing from start to finish. But in a lot of cases, it is the natural breaking points that we were trying, I was trying to break them up into workable sections that either A had the same problems or were a, a level of effort that was, that would be approximately the same as other things. So that's where you see Northwest River Road busted up into several different pieces because it's got different problems. And you see Gonzales Street busted up into two pieces because it's got a diff, differentiation at one intersection. And I was trying to get work pieces that were small enough. Sky Drew, Skyview Drive and Skyline Drive are in the same neighborhood, but they're 90-degree section, so they're into, so you get the idea of the way that work. Then we tried to go identify some issues with it. So if you scoot over, we then gave counsel and myself, everybody, five votes with number one being the, the one you'd like to see the first and number five being the last. So pick, pick the top five. They did that. And when you rank them all so that the low score is the one that comes up to the highest priority, it comes out looking like that. Can you get it all on there?
Yeah. It's small.
Oh, wait, column D again, let me remind everybody what that is. CSR stands for, we, we selected the concrete side strips with a asphalt road in between as the design for that. Those were picked due to the fact that where we had low chance of improving drainage so that this was all to address the edge issues that we see all over town and the ability to not be able to get the water away as ideally would be. It is the most cost-effective solution to addressing the drainage issue without actually going in there and installing a below surface drains and/or buying people's front yards to install drains or what, or ditches or whatever we would have to go do. And it looks like, like what Jared's got on the screen. The SPCs were kind of special circumstance areas, mostly due to, they were going to obviously have to have flooding control, some kind of, or some kind of special construction that is not just lay down, you know, go in there, rip it up, put it in the right location, build base down and, and put the road down. The why that surrounds the second pack is in there for that reason, because it is not, there are some intersections with AD that we would have to engineer and do, do a little special work on. Main Street between Lockhart and FM 1979 was considered a special thing because of the width, because of the Three Rivers Church parking lot is kind of part of the road, didn't have to be, but it interrupts. but it interrupts drainage and movement of water in there. And because of the intersections down at the 1979 is, is, uh, would even have some special engineering thought processes to it. And then, uh, the Northwest River Road, the number N, Northwest River Road between Main and the Shoe Tree, of course, is the piece that, uh, is goes underwater whenever it rains, as we all recognized this weekend. Uh, but it's also as part of the grant that we, we, we got in. So, so that one kind of goes away. So the items in yellow, I think, are things that, that will require a little more money. Uh, and certainly number N, we don't want to go, if we're going to get that grant, we don't need to be spending our money on, on fixing it just to come back and spend grant money on it. So. So that's where we fall out. So the top three that, that bubble up are Gonzales Street, both sections are one and three, and then Lockhart Street from the intersection of the Y to the front, at the front of the church down to Main Street. Those I think are pretty good choices. So with that, so what, what we need to leave with today is tonight out of council is an agreement on which roads we ought to go pile into trying to, trying to get bids on. This will require that Mr. Turk do his, his trick, uh, come up with the specifics of what will go into our RFQs. And then, um, be able to, to support that as we get the, the bids back. Initially, we said, well, let's go pick one and let you go do it. I have no problem with saying, let's go build RFQ packets for all of them and see how the money fits. The difference was between item A, which is the, uh, Lockhart Street thing is, is you look out there to column M, it's got a 1,420, 30, whatever that is. That's how long that street is. Uh, and we were talking, when we, we did our estimates, we came up with a hundred and something dollars worth of construction, 105, it's up there on top. $106 if we put in the concrete room strip. That's construction cost for 20-foot. And that was a guess about two and a half years ago, three years ago. So when you extend that out at 1,430 feet, we kind of exceed our budget. But that doesn't mean, I mean, that, that, that $106 was a guess. It was an educated guess. We got that from DCS, but, uh, it could conceivably come in less than that. Mr. Turk probably wouldn't agree with that. But, but I kind of think that out there, if you, if you ask hard enough, sometimes you get special stuff. So. Uh, I would have a problem with saying, let's go do three packets, send it out for, for quotes that, you know, and, and see what falls out. And then if whatever, which one of those three or two of the three or, you know, meets the budget, do, do make the decision on which, which ones to do at that point in time.
Do we want to do the engineering soil study, um, road base study, whatever you want to call it, geotechnics, um, on these roads first? So we know what to request in these bids? So if I, I'd make an assumption that all three of these require reconstruction of the road base.
Oh, yeah.
But, um, you know, if there are sections of it that wouldn't require that, uh, maybe we could, we could define those areas better as a potential cost savings, but I.
Well, all of those have the sewer under, not under, under, and, and all of those have got uh, spot deterioration, itch deterioration. And I, 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 each one of those, I, you know, I'd be surprised if anybody could show up and say, oh yeah, this is, this has got good base under there. You don't need to do this crap.
Yeah.
And it, it, those were all put in in the 50s and not much done to them since then. So, um, Thomas, are you, are you still on there? Can you still live with, can you speak to us?
I think he, he chimed out.
Hey, can I?
He's unmuted.
Can I, can I say one thing and I'll shut up? I promise. Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Can I, can I, can I ask one favor? Can we at least get the county out there to have a meeting to at least let, let this, his road maintenance, uh, look, look at these? He's done a lot of roads around here, you know, and at least have an option there to see, you know, first of all, if he can do it, or if it can be done, since he's an expert, that he's done it, he's done it all over the county. And therefore, if he can't do it, I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet forever on that issue. But if he can do it.
Okay, bye. I'll get you out here. We're getting you out here.
Let me, let me finish. So.
Okay, okay.
If it's a, if it's a viable option, if it is, if he says it is, we could put maybe the cost on that and see what that would cost us and possibly could do, we could do a lot more of the roads. That's all I got. Just at least have a meeting, at least have a meeting and talk about it for another viable option, if, if it's possible.
I will, I will try to get, get, get them out here. I will get them out here.
I appreciate it.
Come out here and Don will come out with you.
I appreciate it.
That won't be a problem, Mike. But I do want to remind you that we've gone over this, you and I, Mr. Turk got over this now twice already. And you, you fully said that if the road bases are crap.
Now, now. Now, wait a minute.
I need to creep it out of you is that if, if we're going to go, if we find out that the road bases are crap, that you will quit trying to be an impediment to this and let us go.
Well, let me, let me finish, sir. Let me finish, sir. Now, you, if you read my email, I said secondary roads. I did not say about Main Street or Lockhart Street. I just said secondary roads. Some of those roads are crap. It's obvious, but, but those other roads, I mean, the ones Lockhart, Northwest River Road, I mean, I'm no expert. I don't claim to be an expert, but I'm saying, let's let the people that do this for a living, and I'm trying, and I'm not trying to insult Mr. Turk at all. I'm just saying, it's best to have a couple of heads get together and, and have a discussion. All I'm asking for, and if the council agrees with me, it's just, let's just have a meeting and talk to the guy that does it for a living. That's all I'm asking for, is have a meeting and let's talk about it. That's all. That's all I'm asking for.
All right. We said we would do that.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
It's my understanding, Mayor, that we are specifically talking about, um, the first three items on the spreadsheet. Is that correct? The Gonzales Street, Lockhart, as well as, um?
Or Gonzales.
Yeah, basically those, those first three. Is that correct? That, that is what we are specifically at hand right now.
That's my suggestion, recommendation is that we go get authorization to get a, to go out for RFQs for repairing those roads.
I have a, I have a. Go ahead.
Okay, shoot.
Okay. So I have a suggestion about that when it comes to, uh, uh, listing for an RFQ. My first thought is when it comes to the soil sampling part, I do not know what kind of expense that incurs, although what I do know is that very often, engineers and/or firms want to have their own, their own vendors do those type of soil samples so that they are current and right at the time that they are creating their bids. So part of that makes me think that should be included in the RFQ so that that fee would be part of what they, um, submit. As well as I would like to see the RFQ be listed for each road individually as well as all three of them collectively. As we know, that very often, the more you do, the less the expense per, per linear foot or square foot, whichever way they are measuring. So those are my thoughts and suggestions.
Let, let's let Mr. Turk speak to the soil sample issue.
Sure.
He needs.
Tom, what she's asking is, is should we, should we include the soil sampling and of substrate uh, as part of the contractor's cost? Or should we do that ahead of time so that we can know what we want the contractor to do?
Typically, uh, we'll conduct the geotechnical investigation and do a pavement design as part of the engineering. And then that information is incorporated, incorporated into the plan is a typical section that tells the contractor how he needs to stabilize the subgrade, build the base material and come back with, uh, curb and the, uh, uh, the asphalt. Um, it, it, we typically do not hand that responsibility off to the contractor. When we go out for bids or RFQ, whatever you want to call it, uh, all the contractors have to bid basically on the same thing. You have to create a kind of a level playing field. Everybody bids on the same kind of work. Uh, if you ask the contractor to do his own, uh, geotechnical investigation and do his own pavement design, uh, now everybody's, uh, not bidding on the same thing. So it's typically done beforehand and incorporated into the plans and the engineering.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As far as the bid, the bids, what I'm proposing is, is that we would have three bids, actually four bid packets that go out, one for Lockhart Street, one for JA, the, the one, the small portion of, of Gonzales Street, one for the larger portion of Gonzales Street, and a fourth one for all of Gonzales Street, Lisa.
Okay.
Therefore, and, and then the reason for that is, is that we're, all of these will be over $50,000. So by law, they got to be sealed bids. We're all going to have a big bid opening party whenever it happens. We'll open them up and we'll look at the prices. We have a defined budget of $128,000. So I, 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 I can't get these engineering guys to even tell me I can do a thousand street feet of, of road for something like that. So I'm pretty sure that I certainly can't do them all for that. That, that, I mean, that, we don't have the facts on that, but, but I, but common sense tells us that, that bundling them to ask for them all is just going to be a waste of everybody's time.
Okay, sure enough. Thank you.
However, I do think that we might get lucky with Lockhart Street. We might get lucky with all of Gonzales Street. But probably going to be down to whichever one fits into the budget by itself is, is what we'll end up having to go do. But I do think it's important to get on a do one road. Okay? We, we need to, A, prove the process that we followed works, that we understand how to go do this so that we can repeat it as this money begins to grow and, and we have more to spend on long-term capital improvements so that we can get more and more roads done. That, that's definitely, uh, beneficial to take the money that we've got in hand now and go off and get one done. Uh, I, I do think that it's time to do that.
Agreed.
Dan, you got any questions or comments you want to make for we?
No, uh, I mean, yeah, all I want to do, I mean, right now, what we're trying to decide is just prioritizing these first three roads, Gonzales, small area, Lockhart Street, and the large, larger portion. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, when we started, it was, you know, there's 27 or 30 or whatever the, the segments that we've got listed, all of those up there. I wanted to go make sure as we set off down this thing, we had full commitment from the council on doing one of those roads, one of these three. Initially, it was let's pick the one and go after it. But the more I thought about it, the more I said, you know, we really don't have to do that until we get the money specifics in. And so if we, if we're slick about how we go ask for the bids, it gives us flexibility up to the point in time that we get there. Now, what we really don't want to do is go down, do all that work and get all the way down there. And then somebody jump up at the end and say, ah, I really don't agree with doing this road. Let's go, you know. When we leave here tonight, what I'd like to say is, is that we all are in agreement in the future to say that when we get the bids in, whichever one fits, whichever one or multiple ones fit in within our budget, we're all committed to go ahead and go make that happen.
Right.
You know, it's, it's my thought, it's my thought process and like, like you've stated, you know, specifically me, even though we kind of did a reevaluation, um, these roads were put into priority several years ago. And all of them have just continued to deteriorate to a certain degree. Lockhart Street specifically has benefited over the last year and a half based on just surface level pothole repairs. I will say that the two sections and/or the entirety of Gonzales Street is not able to be pothole repaired. I personally drove down that street just in the last couple of days after all of the rain. And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty kind of fearful that there could be some liability on the city's part in relation to, I'm not exaggerating, somebody falling off into a sinkhole on those, on two sections of that street. And so it's my desire to put Gonzales, uh, both portions of it ahead of Lockhart when it comes to us deciding, let's move forward with one particular street. That is my recommendation.
I want, I'd like to see the smaller portion go and let's, let's see how it goes. Uh, and if we get a combined, uh, RFQ for the whole road and we find it more, um, you know, financially, we get a better deal, then let's approach that at the ti, you know, uh, at changing it to doing the two Gonzales Streets first.
I, I would, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Turk, is that a typical situation? When you're looking at the, the length of the two sections of Gonzales, that there would potentially be a better rate for a full repair of the entire street versus just part of it?
Uh, generally speaking, uh, the bigger the project, the more expensive the project, uh, the, the better unit price you'll get. It's basically economies of scale, uh, uh, would give you a, a better pricing. Smaller projects, you typically get, uh, larger unit prices because, uh, uh, there's just less cost basis. So the bigger the project, the better.
Right.
And that's, that's why I'm saying, Jen, you know, between the distance in feet between the two portions of Gonzales is right at 1,000 feet versus 400 or 600.
We're talking very small distances here, though. I can't, I can't imagine economies of scale being achieved with an extra 400 feet. I mean.
I can get some, but I don't know how much, but you'll get some.
I mean, that's a, that's a good point. Uh, it's, it's not that much difference.
And, but then the other part is that if we're going to do a street, do a street. Even though that street is, you know, has two particular, particular sections, but, you know, do a street.
Yeah, I, 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 I like that comment. My, my, uh, my gut says bid all of Lockhart Street, uh, and bid all of Gonzales Street. And look at the bids and see what you get and pick one or the other.
I like that. I like that.
If they fall, the, the, the fear is, is that, that both of them are too long and they don't fall within the budget.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a concern of mine. You, you have 128,000, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at a cost estimate on Lockhart Street of 162, and that was two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, you gotta, you gotta add in about 6% for inflation since then. Um, so it, it, it appears from the onset that, uh, there's not enough money for construction.
Okay, can I say another point? That's why I'm saying, let's, let's consider what I've suggested and you've looked at it, Mr. Turk. Let's get with the county and at least have a conversation so we can get more bang for our buck. You know, I mean, it, it tells me right there, we can't really get much done. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do a Cadillac plan, what you're trying to do is a Cadillac plan. We don't have the money. I don't know if you disagree with me or not, but I mean, do. I don't know if you disagree with me or not, but I mean, do what the county does, and at least have that conversation, and have it at least as a viable option for us to consider. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah. Well, when I, when I do my, uh, street evaluation, uh, what I will come back with is a a range of options that you can do.
Thank you, sir. That's all I'm asking for.
And and each, each different option will give you a certain pavement life, okay? Uh, for example, if we just go in there and put another surface coat on what you have, you know, it'll look good for a year or two, and then it'll just, you know, begin to deteriorate, and it won't be long before it looks like what it looks like today. Whereas if we went in there and rebuilt the street, you know, it it might last really well for twenty years.
Well, Mr. Turk, let's ask that question to the county. When they did the overlay, because the 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 one they did at Old Martindale Road was done a year and a half ago, and this, and I drive that road all the time, it still looks good. Let's ask the guys and ask them how, what their track record, track, track record is with this overlay. That's all I'm asking for, is another viable, and then you could give us analysis on longevity or whatever.
We've agreed to that already, Mike.
I'm just, you know what, I just want to have a discussion because what I'm seeing here, folks, and I don't know if any council person agrees with me, we don't have the money to do the Cadillac plan. I mean, I'm trying to get, we've got a problem here. That's all I'm asking for.
Mike, you're correct. We do not have the money to do the Cadillac plan. However, we are specifically talking about Gonzalez Street and Lockhart Street. Lockhart Street might have the base that could.
But let's have the conversation.
However, Gonzalez Street does not. Gonzalez Street does not.
All I'm asking for.
We are talking about trying to get an RFQ put out there and what information we want in it so that we can move forward to find out what it's going to cost in the first place to find out if we do have any money or not.
That's why I'm asking the question for an alternative, an alternative situation to do is to spread our money out.
We got it.
That's all I'm asking for.
We got, we got it. We're going to move forward with what you're talking about.
Hey, you know what? I don't interrupt you, Lisa. When I'm talking, you talk. You, you know, have a little respect, you know?
Okay, guys, okay. Okay, 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 hey, hey. So, yeah, oh, the, uh, the action for this, this agenda item was to try to get us to 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 agree on these streets. I think we got agreement, we got violent agreement on which streets to try to go off and go work on first. Now, what, how we do it, to Mike's point, we're still going to go do some more investigation, but he doesn't have any, we don't have any prices to compare it to if we don't go out for the RFQs to do it like we think we want to go do, especially Gonzalez. So what I'm looking for out of the council is agreement that we're going, that that we charge off, spend our time and some of Mr. Turk's time, and meaning our money, on working on those three areas, or two streets, three groups, four groups, whatever it comes down to.
And that would include soil samples?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We 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 would come up with the, with the information to make everybody happy as to what the eventual solution would be, or eventual construction would be. So can we, Sam?
Yeah.
Get somebody to make a, a motion to proceed with price RFQs for those three groupings.
I I make a motion that we proceed with an RFQ for those, uh, three items that we've just discussed, which would include soil sampling.
Uh, so that you said the three items, so we're going to be doing, uh, an RFQ.
A.
A, A, and JB, correct?
Correct.
That we'll have soil samples and, uh, RFQs for those portions of the roads in Martindale, of those roads.
Yes.
Okay. With the soil samples.
Yes.
All right.
Do I have a second? Is that you, Jan, the second minute? Jan, second. All right. Sam, you've been quiet. You got anything you want to say?
I agree with that. Uh, I think as we research Lockhart Street and more, we're going to have to really figure out how strategically to fix it because of the residents that live on that street, because the post office being there. Uh, will the street be broken into one half and then the other half and all this? So that is one of the most complicated streets, but it's also the one that needs to be fixed the most. So I will agree to these three picks, and then, of course, more discussion will have to be talked about how to strategically do this on Lockhart Street. So I I agree with it.
Did you capture that? Was that a yes? Was that a concurrence to the motion?
Yes. That was a long answer. I I agree.
Mike, can I? I agree. I agree.
Thank you. The motion. We will proceed ahead with that. Thank y'all for your time and effort. This is a, you know, one of the biggest spending items we have. It's, uh, it's, it's good to have these discussions. It's good to get concurrence. I think that, uh, citizens of Martindale are always happy with the fact that everybody was engaged in this, so I appreciate that. All right, now on to eight C. Which is our Historic Preservation Commission. And so, uh, there are five positions on that. I apologize to Mr. Foster, somehow we got an extra E in his name, I believe. At the last meeting, we talked about calling for volunteers to fill positions on this. We have one opening on the Historic Preservation Commission. We also discussed, uh, of trying to capture terms and get them into a mode that that we have a regular ability to 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 go do this without having to remember and do it at half azurty at different times. And we put that on the webpage with what you see up there. That's a direct copy of our webpage now that that talks about that. So, uh, the first, this, this agenda item is to select somebody to fill the vacancy. We have two volunteers for this. One is Catherine Glaze, uh, and the other one is Mark Villalobos. Catherine has previously served on this commission, I believe. Is that correct? And, uh, with that, we need to, we're open for discussion. Anybody want to speak to this or not?
Just for clarification purposes, um, can you redefine or make certain that we are aware of how you want us to do this? Can we just?
We got one spot and two volunteers. We're going to need somebody to make a motion to, uh, I don't know, I guess we could do.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to nominate Catherine Glaze. Or is that a motion? I guess not a motion, should we discuss? I'd like to, uh, to select Catherine Glaze for this position.
Okay, so so Jan said Catherine. Anybody else want to talk? Say, do they come in, ask any question? Catherine is here. Mark's not, but Catherine is.
Somebody want to hear?
Going twice. We have a motion. Anybody want to second it?
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Lisa, what you, what say you?
Uh, nay.
And Mike?
Uh, yay.
It was my understanding that we were going to discuss and make a decision as to who we were going to put forward, which is why I asked that question. And so I did not understand that Jan was presenting an actual motion. I thought she was just giving her opinion as to who she would like to, to put up.
Well, I wasn't sure either with the procedure, maybe.
I think we were still, I think we kind of got lost in our procedure because, given the opportunity, I would have made a motion for Mark Villalobos to, uh, be, uh, added to the Historic Commission.
And, uh, uh, the reason why I thought Catherine would be a better candidate is that she's been on it before.
And that's the exact reason why I would like to see someone new. And for the other part that I am under this, under the impression that Catherine has also uh submitted an application for the Parks Committee, so for the fact that she's submitted for both and only one for specifically for the Historic Commission, that Catherine would, um, be appropriate for the park. Yeah, I mean, that was my thought. I mean, but both.
Well, I felt like that she would have been more appropriate for the Historic Commission than the, than the Parks personally.
I would agree with what Lisa's proposing. I'd rather be on the Parks.
Oh, fair enough.
All right, uh, anybody want to change?
Yeah, based on that, you want to, uh, either retract or amend your motion?
I I still want Catherine.
Yeah, but she doesn't. She wants the park.
Yeah, she wants the park.
Let, let the volunteer be where she wants to be.
I totally agree.
Mike's changing his, doing a.
I'm changing mine. I totally agree. Pick her, pick which one she wants.
Sam, what you want to say, you want to retract your second?
Yeah, I'll, you know.
I'll tie, it's a tie. If you want me to break the vote, I will.
Please.
Uh, I think we've heard her concern, so I guess I'll retract my second for now.
So with that in mind, thank you. We have one volunteer for one, for one position, on the Historic Commission.
Okay, so.
Mark Villalobos.
Yeah, so Jan subtracted, so I'll make the motion that Mark Villalobos be added to the Historic Commission.
Thank you, Jan.
Yeah, just a second. Okay, who, who can we have a second? Sam, you want to be the second?
I'll second that.
All right, bye.
Hey, I'm favorable, okay.
And Lisa, you already, as Lisa did that. Jan, you want to? Nay, okay.
I think Catherine.
Passes three to one. Thank y'all, I I, you know, that's probably, this was a tough one. All right.
Fair enough.
Moving on, before we go to the next one, we, we, we had some discussion at the last meeting about changes to the Historic Preservation Ordinance to try to simplify some of this stuff. So, uh, that's, that's item, again, item eight D. This could be just discussed.
First.
Yeah, maybe we should have done those first, so. All right, so, uh, what, what you see is, is what I sucked out of the, at our current ordinance is the things in red on the screen are suggested additions, except for the ones that struck through, which was, which are in red, but they're struck through because they're there, and I'm saying that, take those out. The, the, when they, when they originally wrote this ordinance, they were starting from scratch, so they had to pick five people, and this was, that, that statement that was in there was to try to get them onto the rotating, uh, cycle, uh, so that every, every year, somebody rolls off and somebody else comes on, or at least the terms change, half, half the team, half the commission's terms change every, once every twelve months. Uh, the reason I wrote this was, uh, to try to sync this up with the annual city elections. So after the elections are canceled, this, within the next meeting or two, it's time to review these. This gives us the reminder that, uh, it's time to go off and make these changes. And it also speaks in here, uh, that we're going to assign a place number so that we can keep track of whose, whose terms begin and end where. Uh, anybody want to have a discussion about the proposed changes?
So just the stuff in red is what's being changed?
Yep. I'm saying, take out the part that says that the, the initial term, because the initial term happened many, many years ago, it doesn't need to be in there anymore. And then add the piece that says, uh, each year, as soon as practical or following normal city elections, this council will review board membership and make the annual appointments. A citywide announcement should be made using the normal communication processes announcing the potential opportunities for citizens to volunteer for this board. Those who volunteer will be considered by the council. Board positions will be annotated by a place number to assist in keeping term links in balance. Now, it doesn't speak to how you go about this. I mean, we, we struggled with this all the time. I guess we settled on mayor pro tem and, and, uh, the planning and zoning, chairpersons selection in a different way, and then just jumping in there with.
Motion.
I believe they're different, they're different, they're different positions, they're different calibers of positions.
Between.
We couldn't, we, i- if, if somebody can come up with a slick way of, of, of how you want to handle this.
Uh, what I wanted to do was, uh, you, let's go ahead and like, who would I like to nominate? Whoever, who would everybody like to nominate? And then find out who, what was the most, and then make a motion.
And we've done that, and we've done that before, and I think that's a fair process.
Yeah, and I think I was trying to start to do that, and I kind of.
I thought so. I thought so.
Okay.
So.
So, in, instead of saying normal elections, would you want to set a date? Like, council will establish, um, or nominate folks on July first, honor before July first, and that gives you the month of June after the may election to, to handle that on the business?
That certainly could be put in there. This year's activities, you know, this, this kind of, kind of gives them.
No, no.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't know if, uh, Ken's looked at it, but normal city elections, we might have to get a legal review on that terminology.
Okay. Wymer, you out there? You want to weigh in? He was there earlier.
See him?
Who's he?
He's not.
Unless he's dialed in on a phone.
He, he was, he was listed originally, but he may have lost connection or something. Okay, let's see. We'll highlight normal city elections and put in there that we want to talk to Wymer.
And in the interim, in the interim, can we go ahead and, and, and I, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and, um, accept the, uh, changes to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, uh, one-five-one dot zero-three, to clarify terms of office and annual appointment process as presented.
Problem with that is if we're going to change this, we, you know, we don't need to do it twice.
You can subject a legal review or something like that.
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all, all, all right. Say, say it again.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, uh, accept as presented the changes to the Historic Preservation Ordinance, one-five-one dot zero-three, to clarify terms of office and the annual appointment process based on, or with the conditions of, uh, legal review.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
All right, Jan? Yeah or no? Did you lose her?
Um, yes, we did.
Mike, yeah or nay?
Yay.
That's three O, three, three O and one. And I guess, didn't you know, they're not both.
You can pass it to that. That's enough.
That's enough. All right, thank y'all. I've got that. Moving on to the Parks Advisory Board. So, uh, the Parks Advisory Board, we have one vacancy, and Sam has requested verbally to, uh, be relieved of duty here as a chairperson. He'd like to, with his roles on the waterboard and, and, uh, city council, I guess he's, he thinks that. So we really have two, two places open for that, and we have. three volunteers. We have Angela Jimenez who is here.
Hope you want to get back to that previous.
We'll get the, we've got to get this one. Jan's back. And. We have three volunteers to fill two places here. And so let's go around the room this time and see if anybody wants to, wants to propose a, a, one of these, two of these people. Wait, wait a minute. That way, should we do one at a time?
Council member for their nominees.
There you go. Let's do that. So, so Sam, you got, do you, you, you've had a chance to read the, read these?
Yes.
Activities and this is the Parks Advisory Board. So you're the, you're kind of the expert. Want to, so give us two, your, your two nominees out of these three.
My two nominees will be Angela Jimenez and Catherine Blaze.
Okay, you want to, you want to politic a little on them or not?
You don't have to.
Oh, yeah. No, I think that Catherine, based on the amount of time that she's lived here and that she is seen quite often walking around town and walking from downtown up to her house. I think she's very familiar with the landscape and the lay of the lands, so to speak. She has and is now belongs to the friend of the park, so that's why I would recommend her. And Angela, I think it's great that we now have someone, a new family living on Main Street there and she's very close, of course, to Guard, Guard, Guardiola Park, both in distance and sentimentality. And I think she would also be good to help us work on Allen Bates Park. And that's, and I like her experience. It says here HOA in Morningwood. So that's why I'm recommending both of them.
Okay, Lisa, you got, let's have two right of you.
Yes, sir. My first nomination would be for Angela Jimenez. And my politicking, if you will, is certainly based on the fact that she has served on an HOA board in the past, as well as the fact that she lives a stone's throw from both of our city parks that are downtown. And having boots on the ground and eyes that are right there has merit. So I would like to nominate Angela Jimenez. The other person I would like to nominate is Susan Shune for the fact that in her application, she states that she has experience reading and interpreting statutes and ordinances. She has a personal interest in protecting, preserving and improving community parks for the benefit of residents of Martindale, especially as the city grows. She states with a quote, "No one wants to," quote, "pave paradise and put up a parking lot," which is a quote by Joni Mitchell. So my two nominations are Susan Shune and Angela Jimenez.
Okay, Mike, how about you?
Angela and Catherine. Basically Catherine, like I kind of agree with Sam, you know, both my sentiments there. Angela is a newcomer and she lives right on that, on the edge of that property. So she is right there in the middle of the park system. And Catherine Glaze, as Sam has stated, has been here for many years and she definitely likes to walk and she wants her parks. And I think she would be a great asset to the Park Advisory Board.
All right, Jan, how about you?
I'd like to nominate Susan and Catherine. I know that, I don't know Angela very well, but I know that a lot of the parks committee members do a lot of volunteer work and it's going to take, you know, strong backs. So and I, I feel like that that Catherine and Susan would be the best as far as I, from what I know.
Okay. And keep a track here. We've got three, three nominations for Catherine, three for Angela and two for Susan. Sounds like it's Catherine and Angela to me. Somebody want to make a, make a motion that way?
I make a motion that we nominate Catherine, I mean, that we select Catherine and Angela for the Parks Committee.
Should we not do them individually?
That's probably a good point.
Didn't we just do them individually?
I make a motion that we select Catherine on the Parks Advisory Board.
Here we go.
I second that.
All in favor?
All right, Catherine, second. So that leaves us with Sam, you, yeah or nay on Catherine?
Uh, ye- yes.
And then Lisa, yeah or nay?
Nay.
All right, that's a 30 Catherine's, 31. Yeah, 31 Catherine. All right, there's one. Now, we need, we need a second. So who?
I make a motion for Angela Jimenez to be added to the Parks Advisory Board.
I second that.
Sam?
Uh, yes.
And who am I leaving out? Jan?
Nay.
So Angela's in three to one. So we've, we've selected them, but I appreciate that. Catherine's here, Mrs. Man is here. You know, we tried to figure out a way to do this to keep from hurting people's feelings. Everybody who volunteers right here is welcome. We want people to go do this. It's just the way these ordinances are written, et cetera, that we have to come up with this process, it seems like. And so hopefully nobody's been offended over all of this. Don't take any of these votes one way or the other. You know, we laughed once upon a time and said, we didn't do it like kindergarten. You put your heads down and raise your hand, you know, who's favorite, whatever. So nobody gets their feelings hurt.
Well, I want to, I want to say thank you for everybody for volunteering.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, we have got that agenda item down. That's the Park Advisory Board. Now, we also had some suggestions about changes to how we do this. The same, this, this is the, our ordinance 93. We've sucked out what's in there right now. Again, the red stuff is just added. This one never had the, the part that we took out of the Historic Commission. So basically, it's the same process for this paragraph of this suggested changes. Any comments on that? Again, it's the, an attempt to go, attempt to go solidify, proceduralize this piece that we keep forgetting to do over and over every year as, as these times come up. So we're trying to get it into the order, ordinance, so we know to do it when it's supposed to be done.
And I definitely think keeping those on the, on the website will help.
Okay, so, so first paragraph, everybody happy kind of with that one?
Yes, yes.
The next page, there was another paragraph that we had questions about. I don't have any, I mean, we need to discuss that. And that is, now you can go to the next one if you don't mind. It's, it's this, they're buried in the ordinance. It talks about, and this is the only, the only commission that has this requirement that I found is that every October, they have to come in here and do, make a special report to the city council. However, we never define what they're, what they're supposed to report on.
And, and if I may chime in, because you did, you did task me with determining what that report would be. I did a, I did, I did a quick search for large cities, small cities, I mean, medium cities and small cities. And basically, when I'll just go with the medium city. I mean, you can look at, at, at San Marcos, if you will. As they progress with their, with their parks plans that are dictated by the council. And so annual, a lot of things happen because they're given X amount of dollars and, and it, in one fell swoop, they're allowed to, to do multiple projects. And so often that information gets lost, just like we have an annual budget where we line item all of the different things that we've done and what we've spent and what we project to spend. Because parks tend to be, you know, a hot item in cities because they are sought after. It gives that park, the Parks Commission or Advisory Board, an opportunity to do that same sort of thing. And so as I searched different cities, it isn't, it, it is, it was a PowerPoint presentation as a, presented as a report that says, this is where we are. This is what we've done. This is what we'd like to see happen in the next budget year. It was pretty basic.
Doing this in October is a bad idea. See, that's after the budget process. This would typically need to be done in July, at least July or June.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly subject to, to our discretion. I just, knowing that it was there, it wasn't put there for no reason. And as, after I looked into it, I saw the merit in having it, so.
So basically, it's what's been done in the past year and what they would like to have done and put in the budget for the next year.
Correct. And, and the biggest piece, I believe, is to, in a concise way, keep it on the record. Make it easy for however many years down the road, all of a sudden, the, the powers that be change on the Parks Advisory Board and they want to know, wait a minute, what was the original plan 10 years ago? They can pull those reports in a much more concise way than needle in a haystack under, under, you know, monthly reports.
All right.
Any more discussion?
Jan, or whoever's asked here.
Well, I'm just going to make a motion that if everybody's ready, I, I don't want to do it too prematurely if there's.
Okay, okay. Let, let's go to Mike right quick first. Mike, what's your opinion on having a annual report? October seems to be an obvious, not the right time, but, but some annual report that lists out projects by
Yeah.
by, by cost.
I, I would agree with you. It should be after the budget sometime, you know, once we.
Before the budget.
Or before.
Yeah.
Yeah, like July.
Sam, you want to weigh in on any of that?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that the date needs to be changed October, so probably as been suggested midway through the budget year. So what, what were you saying, June or July?
July.
Yeah, we probably need to pick one. June, you want June? You think June's a better?
July 1st then. That'll be, that'll be enough time.
Well, when we think about it, when we have May elections, it's often the first meeting in June that the new council is sworn in. And so you would want those reports to be presented to the new council of each year. So July would make the most sense.
I would agree with that, Lisa.
Me too.
All sorts of reasons.
Okay, what about the other changes? Anybody have any problems with the changes on Part B of the advisory?
The.
We would have to change normal city election, just like we did over here.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Kent's back off when I ask him that question.
We can. The one thing before we get off this date. Yeah, just a second, Kent. Before we get off the date change now, the first suggestion was, first portion of this discussion was about new members being appointed right after the election. So May comes around, the election's over. Now it's June. We appoint new members. Oh, by the way, you have a report due in 30 days to tell us what you want to do for the future. But it, it's only half the, the and they don't, and the members don't change necessarily. There's, there's, it's not like the terms are two years, but you don't have to leave at the end of two years. You could go re-up for another two years. So I don't know that that's a problem. I just.
You might, you could consider having the report due and the appointments made at the same meeting.
At the same meeting?
So basically, it's like it, for those outgoing members, their report is included. That way, they're not working all that year towards a report and then they're out and then 30 days later, they get a new team and they swap the report up.
Agreed.
There might, now might be some use to keeping those things linked.
Okay.
Or about, at the same time.
So we'll, we'll work on that one. Now, back to you, Kent. You still there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, we, we had a, that, that page right there. Can you see the screen? Stuff in red.
Yeah.
Uh, the question was, each year, as soon as practical following normal city elections, the council will review board membership and make the annual appointments. The normal city elections term, is that question is, is that what we really want to use? Is that language what we want to use?
You guys can change it to whatever you want to change it to. This is, this is your committee and you can decide who serves on it, how many serve on it, and how long they serve on it.
In terms of tying it to a normal election, is, is there a irregular or un-normal election? I don't know.
I mean, I suppose, I suppose that one could technically categorize delayed elections because of COVID as irregular. Regular elections being the, the election date that a city is elected to accept under the election code. In other words, you can either select May or November and, and there's, there's some, there's some rules around that. But I, I know they're supposed to move to one uniform election date, but we've got those two dates. So yeah, I mean, if, if, if for any reason there was a delay, again, someone could say that's irregular, but what I would think it would be is after each, after each election, that's when you would name people.
Well, our problem is, is we've had special elections for certain stuff along the way that has nothing to do with the council changing. And they happened sometimes on our annual election day and sometimes on the half-year point of the November issue. So that's why the term normal was selected, normal city election, was to try to go say, you know, this is not meant for after every election. This is not meant for, this is changing of the guard time elections and you know, I would not say the COVID delay till November this year was a non-normal election. I would say that, that we moved the normal May elections to November, meaning that that extra six months, you know, council members got an extra six months out of that. But all activities, as we told about picking mayor pro temps and, and planning and zoning chairperson, all of that moved with it. Right. And that's what this was attempted to do is to say, hey, that moves with it. If this, that, this happens again, that, that decision point moves with it, but.
Yeah, I mean, presumably that, that, that argument can be made. All, all I'm saying is if, if we want to modify the language and tighten it up, we certainly can't.
It's, it's new language. The question is whether it's, if, if it's regularly understood, if it would pass your legal review to use the terms normal city elections.
Yeah, I, 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 I think someone that is looking, looking at the language with a fair eye could, I mean, yeah. There, there's nothing wholly unreasonable about the language.
Okay, then I think we're good then. Okay, all right.
Okay, all right. So, uh, with that, we got, we got, we got two pieces to this. There is the, uh, change proposed ninety-three point one-one B, and there is the change proposed to ninety-three point one-one F-four, where we were going to change the date to July first, and we were going to add some language that talks about what's expected in the report. We don't have that. Uh, what I suggest is let's table this to get the wording right and then bring it back to the council at the, your next vote. Everybody, everybody okay with that?
Help me.
Or you could do, you could do the Part B and then bring up the four, F-four later.
Yeah, help, help me understand the language right. I thought we just made that declaration or, or clarification.
On, on ninety-three point one-one B, that's okay. The, the language is, is what we said was you, you rattled off some stuff, but we need to capture that about what's in the report.
Okay.
So, until we go get the words down where everybody can read them, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, with passing what we heard in our ears. I want to pass what we see and with our eyes. And so, uh, the ninety-three point one-one F-four changes need to be written down.
Next time. All right, I make a motion that we accept the changes to the Parks Advisory Board, ninety-three point one-one B, period.
I'll, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Uh, Sam?
Uh, aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
All right, that piece passes, and then.
And then I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we table, um.
Then we don't have to table the agenda item because they were, they were together. We've just passed one, one piece of that, and we will bring on in another agenda item when we get the wording right.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to eight G, which is the utility bill write-off stuff.
Oh, no, this is a crockett lift station.
No.
Crockett lift station repair. Um, all right, so, okay, G. I don't know if I saw this version of the agenda. Okay, so, um, I'll, we'll go ahead and discuss it. I'm, I'm prepared to discuss it. Unfortunately, I don't have a read ahead. Um.
Well, we already kind of discussed this, didn't we?
We, we discussed it, but this is a specific account.
Oh, okay.
We have a specific account that is delinquent and has, is delinquent by over eight hundred dollars. Um, approaching, you know, nine hundred thousand ever, as every month goes past. The, this, um, customer has a restricted or constrained financial resources. They have a fixed income. They're retired. They're, they have, um, experienced medical hardships in the last year. And given the review of their payment plan application, it's unreasonable to expect them to, to pay back the, the amount on a per monthly basis. I mean, if their, their limited fixed income is such that they can likely be, barely be able to afford their current monthly billing, um, according to the, to the documents that were provided. So, um, unfortunately, I don't have the account number with, with me, but what, what I'm requesting from the account.
In my opinion, nor should you say that account number in an open session.
I agree. Didn't this be private?
I'm not going to talk about any of their personal details on who, or who this is. The, the, the issue I, I want council approval on is we have a budget item of three thousand dollars within our, our, our budget to pay for write-offs. And I'm request, and we also have a ordinance regulation that precludes my ability to provide free services. So what I'm ca- asking city council to do is for this specific customer, write off their existing delinquent billing amount of, of excess not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Here, here is what I, here is what I would like.
It's, it's, okay, I got, got new note, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Here is what I would like. I would like a report that does not have an account number, does not have an address, and does not have a customer's name. And I would like the information that you are using as justification for such. So that we can, we're not able to fully, I, I don't feel like we should even fully discuss the particulars. However, just like the, like, like I spoke of ear- earlier, we should have a particular criteria. And so I, I trust, uh, the, the notion that you have, you know, assessed this situation and that you are, uh, bringing it to the council. But I do not feel comfortable, uh, just waiving that, not knowing, uh, certain bits of information. One bit is I did hear you say that they are retired and on a fixed income. However, um, you know, how long have they lived here? I, I, I actually would like to know, you know, you can be retired at sixty-two, but you could also be ninety-two. And I would like to know that. Um, not knowing anybody's name and.
I, I would also.
They're, they're, they are long-term residents and they're in advanced age.
And so when we are writing off the eight hundred, that does not mean that we are going to, that they're going to stop paying, uh, in the future, I mean, as in going forward, we're just going to, you're, you're requesting that we just clear the debt so that they don't see that bill at that level, and they don't feel like, and, and we can just get rid of the past and continue to move forward, and they will continue to pay their monthly bill. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I.
Let, let, let's, let's, let's bring the council up to, to speed on how this works. I think that, that helps them. So go, go back to, to Dwayne's, uh, utility. Profit loss sheet. Okay. Yeah, it's got the utility.
There you go.
Okay, go, go down to the bottom where it says eighty fifty-two. Okay, the count, council, see that account that he's waving at right there? It's account number eighty fifty-two.
Yep.
And that, and we have, for the several, last several years, we've budgeted three thousand dollars in there of potential write-offs, this kind of a situation. Now, we haven't used any of it for the, uh, for three, three years, I think. Certainly as long as Dwayne's been here, we haven't used any of it. But what, what, what Jared's asking is, is that he would go in there once, once we have approval from the council, because the ordinance says you can't, can't do it without the council's approval. He would go and, and you look at all the parts and specifics if you feel you need to. And then at the point in time that we say, yep, this is a situation where we're really never going to get the money, it'd be an undue hardship. The right thing to do is just go, go eat that. We would post the eight fifty-two in there as a, as a write-off, and it's like a negative revenue. Uh, so, so it helps clear up the books. That's why it's important to go off and go do this and keep us, keep us straight. And it is a budgeted item. We, we have the foresight to go off and make sure that there's money there to do this if necessary. Uh, luckily, we haven't had to do it for several years, but with COVID and the like that's going on right now, that, that it's doing it. So that's, that's what we're asking.
So.
But the process is not defined as to how we want to go do that. And you're, you're, we're absolutely correct in not discussing names and account numbers and addresses and all that stuff in open session. Uh, but for the future, do we want to do that in, in executive session so that we can get at to the end right away? And maybe there needs to be a form that we fill out to explain all of it.
I, I would prefer to not have somebody's name.
No.
Or, or be involved in the decision or their address, even with the city council, just.
No, we don't need to know.
Yeah, it's, it's a circumstances that control, not the person.
Uh, 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 Jared, did you pick this person or did they?
I, it's, it's not a lottery. I didn't pick them. This is, this is an account that, um, has been delinquent for some time. This is one of the few that are, that are well over ninety days. I mean, they're, they're approaching two hundred or a hundred and eighty day delinquent or something like this. The, I have been sending notices to the, to the individuals, um, or this customer. And they came in and they, they actually paid a, a portion or attempted to pay a portion of their past due bill um, in excess of what was due for that month. And they, at that time, they, they submitted an application for a payment plan. And based on the terms of that, that's required of part of approving a payment plan is, do they have the capacity to pay or perform under that payment plan? And based on the financial information that they submitted with that application, they do not. So at this point, we can continue to have late notices and continue to handle this as a liquid account, but there is no means from what I can tell from this customer to have the ability to pay their account at this time. Um, and are unlikely to do so in the future.
You know, I'm all for doing this, uh, uh, but is this going to set a precedent? I mean.
So.
It, this, the, one of the criteria is extreme hardship. This is, this would qualify extreme hardship. One or both of the individuals living in the residence experience medical issues. They live on a fixed income. They're retired. They're in advanced age. Um, it, if someone else came in with the same set of circumstances, I would, I would hope that we'd, uh, address it similarly.
So, so here, here is what I would like to do. I would like to, um, table item eight G um, of the utility bill write-off case due to severe medical hardship and ineligible for payment plan based on ability to repay to the next city council meeting, which possibly could be next week. And in the interim, would like for, uh, for Jared to provide the council via email, not the application, but just the specifics. So that those can go on record as this was the decision-making points that, that this council decided on. One very major key factor for me is that they came in. They, uh, voluntarily agreed to try to create a payment plan. And that going forward, if this backlog is, uh, written off, that they will be able to pay their regular bill going forward. All of those factors are very, very key for me. That by itself, I agree with Councilmember Bunker in the sense that we don't want to create a precedence here, that if you just can't, you can, you know, get it blown off. That's not the case. Um, this is certainly a specific situation, so my motion is not that long. I hope Sylvia cut it off at the, at the end result, but I would like to see just those particulars and have that for the record.
So the motion I understand is to table it and then provide a, a written report of the, of fact.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
One, 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 one thing I'd, I'd like to add is that as we speak of it and we speak of this customer, we do not, as you said, know who they are, but maybe there could be some agreement of that customer that they keep it confidential themselves, that the city helps them, because as we said, it could start a precedent, but, uh, if they also keep it confidence in confidential that the city helped them, then it won't get all out, and then we won't have.
We're already telling everybody today.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that would be reasonable.
I don't think we, I don't think, I mean, we can ask legal, uh, uh, about that, but I don't think the city can tell somebody what they can and can't say that.
Well, just say, try and, try and keep it to yourself. That's all. I mean, maybe as.
Definitely make the request, but I'd be, I'd be hard pressed to have him sign a document or anything.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm just saying as, as a request, then please, you know, we've helped you and just sort of keep it on the down, down, down low a little bit. That's, that's all.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
What?
These are public meetings, people are here.
That's all right.
It's going to get around.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we have a motion, uh, to table this item until the one nineteen meeting with, uh, Jared providing more details of the specific circumstances. Do I have a second?
A second.
And Mike?
Uh, yea.
And Sam?
Yeah.
That's just for, we're table, all right. Eight G, eight, eight, eight H, discussion of possible action on crockett lift stations. Continuing the song.
Okay, all right. Uh, we do have, I want to ask, um, Pete to unmute his phone if he can. I believe he's, he's joined us tonight. Um, he might have, he might have set the phone down and walked away. Because this is getting a little later than I, I expected. Are you here, Pete? Thanks.
Yeah, I've been.
All right, so, um, crockett lift station repairs. So some background. Um, the entirety of Martindale's sewer system feeds into crockett lift station. All, all, all sewer systems lead to that point. Uh, and then that lift station pumps the effluent to the treatment plant. So it's a critical piece of our infrastructure. Uh, the lift station was designed to operate with the benefit of two pumps. However, currently, the lift station is operating with only one pump and has been for, for quite some time. It creates a, a dangerous scenario where, um, if we, if we experience a failure with that pump, we experience a failure at the lift station, and we've run into similar issues of that before costing the city, you know, ten, ten thousand dollars, I think, was, was one of the costs about two years ago, um, under the previous service provider. A series of repairs were initiated and made to reinstall that second pump. We purchased a lift and cable systems, went through a deep clean process. We wanted to make sure that once that pump was in, we weren't going to get it all dunked up. Um, however, when we reinstalled the pump, we discovered that the base, the pipe that it sits on and, and uses to pump the effluent up to the treatment plant is busted. And so the pump will run and the, the wastewater in the lift station will, will just swirl. Uh, these pipes are the original pipes roughly twenty-seven years old. And so here's a, here's a picture of what's inside a lift station. Um, and you'll see on the left-hand side, it's the, the chain and, and the, the length, the depth of the dips of the lift station with the pump sitting on top of the elbow, the base, and then the elbow pipe, if you will. Um, and then at this point, I want to toss it over to Pete, and he can kind of go into more detail if I miss something, or he wants to double tap something I might have said and make, make, make more of a point. So go ahead, Pete.
Okay, uh, I'll just, I'll just bring it up to the, to everybody to ask questions, to see what's going on, and, and I'll try to answer the best that I can.
Pete, Pete, I have a question for you. Can you hear me, Pete?
Yes, yes, I can.
What, what is, what is that pipe made out of? Was it a steel?
I think it's, uh, ductile iron, I believe.
Ductile iron, uh, is, is there any corrosion? Issues? It was a corrosion issue, bearable?
It is. It's, uh, what it is. It's, uh, well, you know, those environments, they, they produce a lot of, uh, hydrogen sulfide, you know, it's very corrosive on metal and, uh, even concrete, you know, it's, uh, that's what happened through the years, you know, that stuff wears out because of the corrosion. And that's what happened. I believe that's what happened to this ninety here on this pump on that, on that illustration that you see there.
What, what, where are you going to go? What type of material are you going to go back with on the piping? The same?
Well, they had to, they had to put in the, the, that, it's like an adapter kit that adapts to that pump setup. Have you seen that, uh, that illustration of the, of the pump and, and that elbow?
Yeah.
And, uh, did you see like a flange there and it mates there? And, uh, and, uh, that, and right on top of that flange, you see how it turns on that radius to the top?
Correct.
It, there's a, there's a, there's some pipe that goes up there on the discharge. It that there's a there's a there's some pipe that goes up there on the discharge. I think it's about forty feet. Uh the side, the longer it is, the side deep the the wet well is, about forty feet. I was there when they built that thing. It was back in ninety-five. And uh and it's fairly deep and that's what makes it kind of a cumbersome job because it's, you know, it's kind of a there's some challenges involved because, you know, you're dealing with gases and and stuff like that and just different things. And you in COVID, you know, nowadays too, you gotta watch yourself, you know, and stuff.
So we 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 would go the original material?
Yeah, that would be the best bet, I would think, because uh if not, you like PVC, it's too uh I've seen PVC in the past in other in other places and uh it's not very durable because sometimes they'll come apart where uh you have a flange to flange make there on that. You see, you got this bolted down and it's a solid piece, you know, and you won't have any problems with that.
Okay, so you you mean so it it was due basically to corro- to a corrosion issue pretty much?
Yeah, I I give you a good a a good example. It would be like a, for example, I want to use Steve Fonville, you know, he's got a distribution system. If he gets a broken pipe, you know, and gets a hole in it or a crack, the same scenario here. I mean, you get corroded like a crack or a corroded uh piece of uh rust on a on a on a on a pipe there, it'll 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 start to bust out and start leaking and stuff. So it's the same the same thing that we're doing.
Is this is this does this have to be special made or is it in stock this particular?
Probably gonna that that contractor who does that work gets the this this work, they're gonna have to fabricate all that. I'm sure they're gonna have to all the flanges and all that stuff.
Uh real real quick, do you know the wall thickness of that of that of that plant of that piece of pipe?
I'd be lying to you if I if I told you something that I'll have to uh go back and look, you know, and uh get that because I'm.
Well, you know, I'll just say, you know, I was I did pipeline construction and I know about piping and stuff. I was just I was just curious the the type of material. Do we do we do we go back with a heavier? Do we go back with, say, was it better to go back with a steel version of it? No? Uh a heavier a heavier thickness? That's I guess this is my questions I'm asking to for durability.
Either, yeah, I would think with a with a thicker wall thickness, I would suspect that's something I would have to uh would have to get with a contractor and ask him to see what what's out there, you know, what's available for a good quality of pipe, you know, and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I would I would say usually if, you know, I guess based on cost, but if, you know, depending on the wall thickness, you know, if it's a lighter wall, if this one's an example, a lighter wall thickness, maybe for additional cost, we could go where the thicker wall, you'd have a longevity. You know, you have more a longer longevity. With that particular piece also, was it was it painted? Was it any painting or coating on it?
Hmm, but if when if when if this went in, it has a if it's ductile iron, it has its own uh its own uh material that comes out on it, whatever they put on there, you know, it didn't have no epoxy or anything like that. That's what you're trying to ask me.
Yeah, I suppose. Cold talker.
No, sir. Didn't have any of that stuff on there.
I don't what the I don't what the mayor thinks. Maybe, I mean, it definitely needs to be fixed, but maybe we could check and see if we can get a uh a thicker a thicker bin elbow there or a different material or a coated elbow, something what they would recommend. Uh that would be more durable in term, you know, and if we can we can get to double the service life, you know, might be a might be worth additional cost.
Yeah, the thing is, is you know, that uh this uh this pump here, it's a it's a specialty item. It's all the it's made by flight, you know, and and they're the ones that uh that's their that's their product. They're that adapter. It's an adapter kit that go that fits to this pump. So we probably have to ask the manufacturer, I guess, so the contractor.
That would be good. What you could probably given your situation and what they would recommend for corrosion, protection or longevity. Uh so did that did that flange, did that come with that pump with originally? Was that was that the original design that came with that pump, the original pump?
That's correct. That 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 was a that was a everything in there that you see in that that picture. It's it's all this. It's all original. It was put in, like I said, it was put in ninety-five.
Yeah, maybe you could maybe take it takes the pictures and send it to them and see what they think and maybe make some recommendations. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh so how how old is the pump itself?
The pump? The pump is new, I think, uh oh, I think they put that pump in there probably about maybe two or three years, maybe four or five years ago, maybe something like that.
Alright, uh so I'm looking at different prices from vendors, anywhere from uh five thousand to thirty-six thousand. How much is a whole lift station?
Oh.
Uh.
Crockett, that's probably three or four hundred thousand dollar thing.
Oh.
The bottom part. You were talking about like numbers you were talking about like for the street repairs and stuff, but but in a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is this is this for forty thousand gallon or sixty thousand gallon tank. It's like a swimming pool sized thing. It's forty feet deep. And this pipe is down at the bottom of it that has got a crack in it.
Right, right.
When the pump comes on and it's all sitting instead of water going going down the line, it of course comes right out the crack. It just keeps re swirling around. And they've got a good video of what it looks like when it's running, and that's, of course, how we could tell. But the real cost of this is to is to A drain the thing and then stop everything from going in there while you send poor poor worker bee down to the bottom of this forty-foot hole that has been filled full of you know what? And you have to change this this pipe out. And so the the actual cost of the of the piping is probably miniscule compared to the process of of
Yeah.
draining it, blocking it all. I I think Pete, don't aren't there, don't we have to go plum around it or something?
Yeah, there on on some of those guys, they 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 proposed, they proposed and put it in a bypass. There there you know, derotation there because they're gonna have to uh uh if we could, we have another secondary wet well there that's uh that's hooked up to that same uh uh tank there that they they would utilize to fill that up and pump uh and plum in a a bypass into the into the existing piping in that valve valve and pump it to the sewer plant while they're doing their work in there in that wet well.
That's that's where you see those those higher prices. I think one of the one of the things I'm not clear on yet is whether these these vendors who who receive quotes from are quoting on the same thing. And so for that reason, I don't really have a strong recommendation for for council yet. I think unless Pete, you can clarify some of those issues between, you know, helping us identify a vendor to go with for these repairs because those those are some pretty wide varying costs.
Correct.
That's what that's what I was gonna ask is what is the recommendation?
Me too.
I would uh would be I would go with the me personally, I would go with that 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 first guy, the first vendor.
Okay.
And uh because uh he, I mean, that that guy, I I know all these guys here. I mean, I worked around them and they all do good work, you know. Don't get me wrong. They're not just anybody on the street.
Right.
They uh they uh they that that's their that's their specialty. They do come, they build water plants, sewer plants or whatever. I mean, they're they're in the utility business and.
Hey, Pete, Pete, Pete. Pete, I remember uh in in my business, he always he always take, you take the low, they take the extreme low and you take the string high out and you go in the middle. So that kind of seems good. I guess the only thing I'm repeating myself, but it would be good if we could see if if for additional costs, if we could go the maybe a Dexter heavy thickness elbow if if that's if that's something we could consider.
Yeah, because that was what I was thinking that I was looking at the thirty-six thousand dollars that that vendor number three wanted to charge. For that amount, you can go ahead and get the two new pipes installed. Don't worry about it, you know, so. And uh and that and I talked to Jared earlier in the day. I mean, I told him that I always like I always like to get the mid the mid-range price.
Exactly. But uh. Don't agree.
And.
Great, so.
So on vendor on vendor one, Pete, would we want to go back and ask them for a new quote for to do the second elbow? Considering that we had a failure on the on the they're about the same age. We had the failure on the one. It's probably an opportunity to to replace the other before it fails.
Yes, sir.
What would is that a worthwhile preventive maintenance cost or is that a something that it doesn't make a whole lot of difference either way? You're gonna you wanna replace it when you replace it?
Well, the way I look at it, Jared, is that uh if you're gonna go ahead and and do one and you're in there already, I might as well do it both because uh like I said, eventually we might be back there again next year.
Have it in the budget? I'm tired of this workstation given spending us. We haven't spent money on it or this lift station.
We we have it in the budget. We I admit I don't we don't have, there's gonna be some trade-offs eventually, I'm sure.
Yeah.
On, you know, what, any nice to haves, you know, that we're in that maintenance budget. I don't know if we go back and ask them for to to replace the second elbow, what that's gonna do with vendor one's quoted price because right now that's that's just for the one base elbow.
What I what I was going to ask and possibly recommend is if in fact vendor one and vendor two are not comparing apples to apples and they're not bidding the exact same thing, I'd like to see that they would.
Yeah, because the the only thing I saw on vendor two was that they there was their their work plan. They didn't have a very good work plan, I guess. They didn't mention anything about a bypass or anything like that. I don't they didn't show their scope of work, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't certainly doesn't fall into a sealed bid situation, but yet it, you know, it's it's still it's still a lot of taxpayers' money. So I'd like to see both one and two. I'd like to see both of those vendors come back with exactly the same repair and let's see how they play out.
And on both on both elbows.
Yeah. Whatever you.
And Pete, see what Pete, see what those elbows are made out of. One if one's plastic, one's steel, you know, make sure you're compared on, you know, apples to apples.
No, because that they're they gotta be some kind of metallic because uh they, like I said, they're they're made especially for this type of pumps.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're metal. I mean.
So each vendor would have the same type of same type of.
Yeah.
Basically, well, okay.
Yeah, you always want to have the same same thing.
I agree.
Yeah. And uh what I'm gonna do with vendor two, I'm gonna go ahead and ask ask them to give me a to see if they have a work plan and, you know, if they're gonna install a bypass or what they're gonna do. You know, compare a pair of both of them and see what.
And all of those, I'm sorry, go ahead, Pete.
That way they can uh both be uh if a question arises, that that way they both have their input at the same time, you know, with the for the same scope of work. So.
And and what I was gonna say is all of those details are are details that we need on our records. So in, you know, forty years from now, they can go back and say, oh, this is what they did.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So vendor three is uh is quoted a price range to do both elbows, correct?
Correct, correct.
Really? Okay.
Yes, man. Yeah, because that's what I was asking there telling uh I don't know a lot of your folks, you gotta pardon me, but uh but uh I uh for the price of those two elbows, you can get the two elbows for twenty, I guess, just thinking out loud, I guess twenty-six thousand dollars versus a thirty-six thousand dollars. You could probably be saving about maybe ten thousand dollars. You know, between vendor one and three.
We'll see. We'll we'll we're asking for the quote and make sure we're all we're we're getting apples to apples.
Okay.
Okay.
There's no action on this sort of gin item, just a discussion so that y'all know this is coming, right?
Uh. Can I, Rob, can I ask one more?
Now.
Sure, sure, Pete.
Is it? Is it off?
Yeah.
Hang on, Pete's got the floor here, just a second. Go ahead, Pete.
I'm just gonna ask, uh, so y'all want the two quote, one quote from each vendor one and two, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, sorry. I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Jan, you what do you want to say?
I was just wondering, i- is the is the pump operational now with the leaks and everything?
It is.
The the lift station's operational. That that pump is not really operational.
It's offline now.
Yeah, so we're we're just going off of one pump.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I forgot there's two.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, that that get all the questions. Somebody somebody else tried to get in there? Going once, going twice? No. Alright, gin item eight.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, bye-bye.
Whatever comes after H.
Hi.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so on on this item uh review, the final document, future year spend plan, my my intention was to um we we have the 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 numbers approved, but I wanted to publish a a document for the public on our our website and I intended to to have that document ready for your review and and just ensure concurrence in in the language that's in that's included in it. Unfortunately, I was not able to complete that to to level my satisfaction. So my recommendation for city councils to to table this for or uh a future, if you will, the next, either the January nineteenth or the February second um council meetings.
So that would be discussion item I?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh I move that we uh table discussion item I for another uh council meeting.
Well, you gotta pick a date. I would say on or before the first meeting in February.
On or before the first meeting in February?
I'll second it.
Sam, you okay with table?
Yes, I.
Mike, you okay with table?
Yay, yes.
Done. We're on to future items now. Let's see here. You see the list in earlier uh somebody. Put Parks recommendation for phase one. I guess that was.
Yes.
You said, so we'll put that on there. Anybody got anything else they want to add to the list? We still got your grant advisory commission, Mike. I just didn't, we just made out nine thirty.
No problem. I appreciate it.
It'll it'll come.
Uh what about that section on the ordinance of the park that we have to finish up? That would take, that would be pretty quick. Needs to be written. And then this uh uh discussion, oh, you want to put the the uh action item I on February, I mean, on yeah. Okay.
As just as a reminder to include in a future item, the utility ordinance, um a hardship procedure like we discussed.
Oh, yes.
As well as assuming, I'm assuming at our next meeting, we will get the uh blotter that we would have gotten this meeting?
Sure. I hope so. I did talk to Harry today. He is alive. He sounded a lot better. So I think he'll be here Thursday, but he's got a lot of catching up to do. Two weeks is a long time to be out, so.
Yeah.
And then the zoning ordinance um discussion of on the changes thus far.
Mm-hmm.
So.
The definitions of the terms?
Definitions of terms and and other related items and use table.
Uh now, are these items that are gonna be on uh the meeting for February or are we have we we're gonna have a meeting uh next Tuesday?
We're gonna have a meeting next Tuesday. Uh.
Is that specifically uh planning and zoning?
No, doesn't have to be. Uh we can we we can we can put the planning and zoning definitions in there if we have it. Now, I say that, we got a city holiday on Monday, right? Uh so.
Oh, we did?
That shouldn't be a problem if you post it. It'll be po- the meeting should be posted this Thursday. So the fact that.
Well.
If we post Thursday, we're fine. If if it's also the agenda's light.
Yeah.
I I have. We we can re- basically it's a review in progress.
We we can try to get.
On that, we would review whatever that's at, so.
We'll we'll get a we'll get a couple of these in uh for next week. So we're gonna plan on having one on the nineteenth.
Okay, okay.
Alright, that brings us to adjournment. Anybody want to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
A second.
Sam, you in favor of leaving?
Aye.
And Mike, I'm sure.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good evening.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Well, uh, Rob, so you said you may not wanna run next time.